Afternoon, I think we're gonna get started. Mayor Mahan and Councilmember Batra will be absent for this meeting and we hope they get well soon. I call this meeting to order for the afternoon of February 6, 2024. Tony, will you please call the roll?
Jimenez?
Present.
Torres?
Present.
Cohen? Ortiz?
Present.
Davis?
Here.
Dwan? Candelaus?
Here.
Foley? Batra? Kamay?
Here.
Mahan? You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Chuck Cantrell, who is a community leader, and Councilmember Jimenez will tell us a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. We're glad to welcome Chuck Cantrell, who's gonna be doing the invocation. Chuck is a native of St. Louis, Missouri. He has emerged as a prominent figure in community advocacy and leadership, currently residing in San Jose. Chuck serves as a Planning Commissioner for the City of San Jose and the Development Director for the San Jose Conservation Corps and the Board President for Keep Coyote Cream Beautiful, and, if that wasn't enough, the Gardener Neighborhood Association, doing work there, where he channels his love for the community, equity, and social justice. Raised in the challenging environment of the housing projects of St. Louis, Chuck's upbringing instilled in him a profound empathy for marginalized communities and his relentless drive to enact positive change. After completing his education in economics at St. Louis University, he embarked on a journey that would lead him to San Jose, the community he loves and calls home. Now despite the challenges he faced along the way, Chuck remains steadfast in his belief that positive change is not only possible, but imperative. Through his tireless efforts and unwavering commitment to equity, he continues to inspire others to join him in the ongoing pursuit of a more just society, and Chuck will tell us more. Welcome, Chuck. Actually, there's a video.
Hi. I'm Chuck Cantrell. I'm a father, a son, a husband, and an economist. I spent most of my career helping large corporations pivot, change, and maximize profitability. But my real passion has been economics and the study of how these systems impact the lives of all of us. Along the way, I found something, some data, that frankly scared me, and I think it might scare you too. Let's take a look at Santa Clara County. Let's look at its growth rate. It looks pretty healthy. It looks like a normal-growing community that year-over-year builds. But let's take a step back. Let's look at African-Americans within this very same community. We'll see growth until 1990, at which point the actual number, the real number of population, begins to take a significant decline, a decline from which we will never recover. For the last 30 years, we have continued this slide down to the point where now African-Americans represent less than 3% of the population of Santa Clara County. While at the same time, we see growth for African-Americans in a different community. When you look at the percentage of African-Americans within our unhoused community, we actually represent 18% in Santa Clara Valley, while at the same time, we represent less than 3% of the general population. If you look a little further, you'll find that the mortality rates in the unhoused community can reach as much as 20%. While African-Americans overrepresent significantly in that population, we necessarily overrepresent in the population of the souls that perish on our streets. So as you might think that African-Americans are leaving Santa Clara County because of their suppressed income, because of, obviously, the housing costs, you're mistaken. We're not leaving. We're literally dying to stay here. Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, for inviting me to speak today and give the invocation. Thank you for fellow, for councilmembers as well. I appreciate your time. The structures that hinder us, the barriers that stand in our way, are not built by accident. They are erected intentionally, designed to block Black and Brown people from the success enjoyed by others. And while the architects of this structure may have long ago passed, their legacy remains, casting a shadow over all of us. Redlining a practice that systematically denied housing and economic opportunities to Black and Brown communities has had a profound and lasting impact on our lives. It is often ignored, swept under the rug as if it never happened. It's like a creator, its creator, of this hateful system willed it from our consciousness, leaving in place the systems to do their work while no one is really watching. We can no longer ignore the thick red line that divides our communities, the line that creates the haves and those that will go without in our education systems, the line between a living wage and a menial wage, the line between life and death. For some of you, you might sometimes look away. For us, our survival dictates a sharpened vision. We know that we must see this hideous creature and fight it. We know that our lives in this valley depend on winning this battle, and that it must be fought with our allies beside us. We know the words of this creature and how they live in the unwilling, unwillingness of the hearts and minds to change. No, not in my backyard, is the language of the artifacts of the insidious beast of redlining refusing to relent. While we claim diversity important, we engage in an apartheid of our communities. We build walls with language, and we separate ourselves from the perceived threat of the very thing that we declare essential. When you watch the entire video, of which I presented a short piece of, I presented a portion of this today, and you will learn the Black folks' days in this valley are numbered, and we will soon disappear. You will learn how the structures of our employment systems leads to the gross disparity in our incomes, and how the structures of our housing systems have led us to the streets en masse. You will see how the holes in the safety net meant to catch our unhoused has led to the perishing of their Black souls in our streets, our doorways, and our streams. As you plan another storm of budget deficits, I want you to look closely at who you let go first. This is nothing new to us, but it will be new to you to discover it for yourselves. If you look, you will see. Will you reflect fairly on the value of our labor, our humanity, and our right to exist in this community? Or will you fall back on the comfort of your self-protection, better them than thee? I stand here, a voice echoing the cries of injustice that stain our collective conscience. Together, we must rise to tear down these barriers, to stand, I stand before you today, asking you to be counted. I invite you to stand beside me, to begin a fight for justice that has far too long been put aside. Let's not be lulled into complacency by this perception of our triumphs. Let us ensure that every heart beats with the rhythm of opportunity. Together, united, we can sculpt a tomorrow where dreams know no bounds, and the bonds our communities, the bonds of our communities are unbreakable. Stand with me. Work with us. The glory of a united people is that they are not easily divided. They are bound to one another, sharing their strength and multiplying their momentum forward. Please join us.
Thank you so much, Chuck, for those words, and I'm sure we all look forward to seeing the video. Appreciate your presence here today. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to ceremonial items, and will Councilmember Candelaus and Councilwoman Davis please join me in the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim American Heart Month.
Okay, today, we are recognizing the month of February as American Heart Month. I would like to begin by thanking my colleague, Councilmember Davis, for recognizing and bringing this issue to the forefront over the last several years. Thank you, Councilwoman. I would like to commend her efforts in promoting heart-healthy lifestyles with her organized monthly walks and the Plaza Azul Farmers Market. The adoption of a healthy lifestyle can aid in the prevention of heart-straining conditions. Heart disease remains the leading cause of deaths, the death for both men and women in America. Every year, heart disease takes the lives of nearly 700,000 Americans. The statistics are sobering, but they also underscore, underscore the urgency of prioritizing our heart health. This hits particularly close to home. A couple of months back, I actually lost one of my uncles, Ismael Candelaus, or how I knew him as my Tio Milo. So this was sudden, from a heart attack from one day to the other. But, so for me, that's who I will be thinking of during this month to raise awareness on the importance of heart health. By raising awareness, adopting healthier lifestyles, and embracing preventative measures, we can take significant strides towards reducing the prevalence of heart disease because it is a silent killer. During American Heart Month, living a health, a heart-healthy lifestyle involves understanding your risk, making healthy choices, as well as taking steps to reduce your chances of getting heart disease. Organizations like the American Heart Association reinforce the importance of heart health and the need for more research, and efforts to ensure that millions of people live longer and healthier. For nearly 100 years, the American Heart Association has been fighting heart disease and helping families and communities thrive. In closing, I urge each and every one of you to take proactive steps towards safeguarding your heart health and to inspire others to do so, kinda like what Eddie Garcia has been doing the last couple of years. If you haven't read his book, his book is amazing, on that journey of receiving a brand-new heart. Now, I would like to ask the Onicio Palencia, Community Impact Director for the American Heart Association, to say a few words before our Vice Mayor presents the commendation, no, the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Onicio Palencia. I am the community, the Senior Community Impact Director for the American Heart Association. And we want to thank everyone in the City of San Jose for recognizing February as American Heart Month. We appreciate the proclamation today as we celebrate our centennial year of the American Heart Association this year. So we're 100 years old, and our mission continues to making sure that everyone has a healthier life and combating cardiovascular disease. With that, I want to ask Eddie to come and say a few words.
No pressure. No pressure. Thank you, Deal. Thank you, Councilmembers Davis and Candelaus. I am a heart transplant recipient. I received my heart transplant almost four years ago, in April will be four years. But in my journey, I have learned a lot about heart disease, and it's one of those diseases, even though the councilmember mentioned it's the leading cause of death in the United States and in the world, there's, CDC says that every 33 seconds, someone in the United States dies of heart disease. But it doesn't have the exposure of cancer. Cancer's awful. Here's the big difference: heart disease is mostly preventable. Part of it is genetic, part of it is lifestyle. So I encourage everyone to go to the American Heart Association website and look for what they call Life's Eight Essentials. I'm gonna say that again, Life's Eight Essentials, and that gives you a roadmap to heart health. Your heart will be thankful, and your family will be thankful for you doing that. So thank you again, councilmembers. I appreciate the time, Deal. Happy Heart Month.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And now I'll ask Councilmember Ortiz, please join me at the podium, and we will recognize the Grateful Garment Project.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we are honoring the Grateful Garment Project. Yes, sorry. There we go. An amazing nonprofit that serves victims of sexual violence during a critical and vulnerable moment. First, I just want to start off by thanking Councilmember Davis for bringing this cause to my attention and for being a champion of this organization. When sexual assault survivors undergo a rape kit exam, an extraordinarily difficult process, they are asked to surrender their clothing for DNA evidence. Once that clothing has been surrendered, the survivor often has nothing to wear home but a hospital gown. The Grateful Garment Project was started to make sure that all survivors are provided with new clothing, toiletries, snacks, and other resources. Sexual assault and other gendered forms of violence are still all too common, and survivors of these horrific acts are often not treated with the respect, empathy, and dignity they deserve. That is why the mission of the Grateful Garment Project is so essential for our society. By helping survivors take care of immediate needs, survivors can know that they are not alone. After 12 years of operation, the Grateful Garment Project now works with 115 partner agencies in 51 counties, serving an average of 43 people a day. They have proven themselves to be an indispensable part of the community to address sexual violence and build a community of common respect. That's why I'm proud to partner with Councilmember Davis to present this commendation to Marcia Rendell, a board member of the Grateful Garment Project, in honor of their important work. And now I'd like to invite Marcia to say a few words.
Thank you. We'd like to thank... It's okay. Yeah. Thank the council for your support and recognition of the Grateful Garment Project. As he said, we work with 115 agencies throughout 51 counties in California. If you should know of an agency that might be good to partner with us, who provides services to victims and survivors of sexual assault, let us know, and we can try and reach out to them. It's, as he said, a really important topic and not talked about enough, so awareness is crucial, and this will really help. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Councilwoman Davis. Thank you for your leadership on this, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. Now we will go on to Orders of the Day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? And the administration would like to add item 3.7, Ratification of Proclamation of Local Aid Emergency, to the agenda. This would require two-thirds vote from the council to place it on the agenda, and I think Lee has some information.
I do, thank you, Vice Mayor. I also want to point out currently 3.5, which was referred by the Rules Committee. The administration did add it to the agenda in the hopes that we could fulfill all of Rules Committee direction, which was to bring it forward once we had heard from the county on whether they were taking a support or opposed position. So we went ahead and did that, but we are still unable to ascertain if the county or when the county would be bringing this forward. So we wanted to make that clear so that the body today can go ahead and decide to defer that item to a future meeting or still act on it. It's your prerogative.
I'd like to just move approval. Should I just make a motion?
Are there any public comments?
I have a public speaker card for item 3.5, so I don't know if that person wants to, isn't that, is that the item you were talking about deferring?
No, this is Orders of the Day.
Right, but, okay, my understanding was him bringing it up. I thought you guys would discuss whether or not you're gonna defer that item right now. So we can wait on that.
Okay, well, should I just go to council?
Yeah, let's see what the motion is.
I'm gonna move to the agenda with the addition of item 3.7, and no other change.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Any members of the public want to talk on Orders of the Day?
I have no cards for it.
On Orders of the Day? Okay. Seeing no other questions, let's go ahead and vote.
Wait, hold on. It was showing up on my screen, and now it's gone. Motion passes unanimously with Batra and Mahan absent, and I'm gonna make the announcement. As a reminder, Batra and Mahan are both absent, and so every future vote will, they will be marked absent.
Thank you. Okay, going on to our closed session report, to our city attorney.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you so much. Moving on next to the consent calendar, are there any items that the council wants to pull from the consent calendar? I don't see any names on the list. Seeing none, we will move on to item number 9.1, Agreement with Macias.
I need to move approval of the consent calendar.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Do you, do we have any speakers on the consent?
No.
Okay. Was there a second? Thank you. There's a motion and a second, and let's vote on the consent calendar.
Motion passes unanimously.
I gotta get the hang of this. Okay, now we will go on to item number 9.1, Agreement with Macias, Genie, O'Connell, LLP, for Annual Financial and Compliance Audits. It is to be heard immediately after consent.
Good afternoon, City Council, Joe Roy, City Auditor. I do not have a presentation, but I have a few comments on the item. I'm asking that you approve new agreements with Macias, Genie, and O'Connell, or MGO to provide annual financial and compliance audits for the City of San Jose and the successor agency, the redevelopment agency. Accepting the recommendation, I'm sure the city has resources available to conduct annual financial and compliance audits in accordance with the city charter, federal law, and other requirements. In 2023, with input from various departments, the Office of the City Auditor prepared an RFP for external audit services for the city and its related entities. Based on a review of the submitted proposals by an evaluation team consisting of staff from my office, the Finance Department, and the airport, the evaluation team recommended the selection of MGO based on their proposal, receiving the highest overall score. MGO is an experienced audit firm with extensive experience in the government sector. MGO has provided financial audit services to multiple large California cities, including Los Angeles, San Diego, San Francisco, Oakland, and Sacramento. MGO has also provided financial audit services, as the city's financial auditor since 2018 is familiar with the city's operations and organization. MGO has a staff of more than 700 professionals and 16 offices worldwide, including a local office in San Jose. With that, I ask that you approve the agreements. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joe. I also need, as this, as part of this item, convene the Joint City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of San Jose as part of the 9.1 agreement. Okay, we're gonna go to public comment first.
I have no cards.
Thank you. To the council now. I have Bien. Go ahead, Bien.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Joe, is this to supplement the auditing department?
So we do performance audits of the city operations. These are the annual financial audits, the annual comprehensive financial report. They'll primarily be working with the Finance Department. There's over, there's roughly 20 different financial audit projects. Under the charter, my office oversees and runs the RFP and manages the contract, so it's part of my work plan. And you'll see, like I said, in December, you saw the, the annual comprehensive financial report come to you all for approval. So it's, it's, it's audit work, but it's not, but we don't do the, the financial audit work, the testing, what have you. That's, we contract that out with Macias, Genie, O'Connell, similar to pretty much all large California cities.
Thank you, and I believe it's like a million dollar per year, right? Over eight years?
Excuse me?
It costs approximately $1 million per year for the services?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other question. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the Joint City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of San Jose and go back to our regular agenda. And we will now go to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Last week, Vice Mayor Kamay, Kamay's proclamation declared February as Black History Month in San Jose. I would also like to invite our community to join in honoring and celebrating the history, culture, and contributions of Black Americans. I'm pleased to let everybody know that the San Jose Public Library is providing a variety of free educational events tailored to people of all ages, including storytimes, art workshops, an exhibit, and a drumming circle presented by the AWO Center. Details can be found at sjpl.org forward slash capital B, capital H, capital M. While this is a month-long celebration, I invite you to engage in learning opportunities throughout the year. You can access the library's extensive physical and digital collection to learn about significant figures in Black history any time of the year, read blogs about Black History Month written and published by library staff, including from staff who are members of the library's Black affinity group. Also, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library includes a special collection of materials on Dr. King and the Civil Rights Movement located on the third floor of the library, and sculptures by American sculptor Lewis in the California Room located on the fifth floor. I'd like to thank the library's staff for all of their work and dedication in developing a series of programs that celebrate Black excellence and for supporting my foundational strategic support focus area of closing racial inequities. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And now we will move on to item 3.3, Adoption of Statement of Policy and City Council Questions for the Perspective Director of Aviation. And I don't think we have a, do we have a presentation on that? No? We don't have a presentation on that. Before we go to council members, is there any public comment?
I have no cards.
Okay, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciated the questions that were already in the memo or the document. I just want to add one more. In the questions, there's mention of stakeholders. And, you know, they talked us a little bit about, you know, who those stakeholders are. I just thought there was a little bit of a gap there. And so the question I have, and I'll read it off, hopefully someone can capture it. And it's this, it's, "A variety of bargaining units comprise some of the stakeholders within the airport. What experience do you have building and maintaining relationships with such stakeholders?" And so I'd be curious about that. And that specifically for my colleagues is there's a lot of different bargaining units, a lot of different unions that interact and sometimes want time and connectivity and sort of a relationship with the director of aviation. And so I think that's going to be important as we move forward. I'd like to better know how whoever the applicant is, how they've dealt with that and how they intend to do it in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I see the Vice Mayor's memo here and I wanted to ask the city manager about recommendation number one. I'm fine with the additions to the additional questions on the recommendations and I'm happy to make a motion if necessary to add those. But I am curious about the Hiring Committee and what the process includes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Davis, for the question. It is very important, and I think we've demonstrated that in past recruitments, that we include key stakeholders throughout the process through gathering information about what are the key attributes, qualities, leadership characteristics that we're looking in our...looking for in our senior staff member. And I make every effort to make sure we have balanced interview panels that represent as many key stakeholders as we can, but also trying to manage the size and the quantity of those panels. It's also important to me, and it's important, I know, for the panelists and the folks that we're interviewing, that we keep those panels confidential. So we do not release that information publicly. But I can assure you that we do do already what is being contemplated on number one and making sure we're including the key stakeholders.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to motion number one then because I do think it's important for you to routine that the leeway in how you choose those representatives and the fact that you've given us assurances that you are including all stakeholders is enough for me. And I don't want to be too prescriptive in the way that we direct. So with that, I will move to include items two and three from the Vice Mayor's memo as well as the question from Councilmember Jimenez.
Second. Okay, so since it is my memo, one of the things that I will say is recognizing what you have mentioned, Councilwoman Davis. And as you can see, in terms of the key partners, it has been such as. So I do think that that is consistent with what the city manager has said. So it's not inconsistent. Okay, anybody else? Councilman Torres.
Thank you. So at last week's BTA meeting, right, I found out that we do not have an easy path from Deardon station to our San Jose Airport, right? And this not only affects commuters, but our working class, that there's no direct route to...from Deardon to the San Jose Airport, right? And it's...we need to have a line, right? But that's an external factor that we need to worry about. I'm wondering if it's possible, because this depends on the success of the director and the success of our city, that as a director of aviation, how will you increase transit and pedestrian service to SJC so that transit is the obvious, easy choice for accessing San Jose Moneta International Airport? That's a question I would love to add.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't really have to make it as a friendly amendment, has already been motion and second, so...
Yes, yes.
That's a friendly amendment, official friendly amendment.
Happy to add that, thank you.
And the second, is that okay with the second?
Pam?
Pam?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any other hands. We did that first.
Wait, I'm still waiting on one. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to item 3.4, Violence Prevention Service Model Status Report.
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Hamilton and we will be presenting to you today on our research into other violence prevention programs in cities across the country. Joining me presenting today will be Alan Barner, a management fellow in the city manager's office, who is my partner on this project. And we also have in the box Angel Rios, Deputy City Manager, and Andrea Flora Shelton, Deputy Director in the Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services Department. So we'll start off with a quick history of this project. Its roots are in the report of the Reimagining Public Safety Community Advisory Committee, which came before the city council in 2022. A number of the recommendations of that report involved violence prevention efforts, efforts to prevent violence in the community before it becomes a police matter. Coming out of conversations between the city manager's office and members of the real coalition who served on the reimagining committee, one of the items we put on our police reform...our work plan on police reform items for this year...for the previous year was to do a research or project on violence prevention efforts in other cities to identify potential opportunities for San Jose to expand its efforts. And that proposal was included in our yearly update on the police reform... our police reform items in May of 2023 to PISFAS and then to council. And we brought this report to the PISFAS Committee December of 2023. And now I'll turn it over to Alan to give some background on our methodology for this report.
Thank you, Peter. So what does the term violence prevention refer to? Violence prevention is a broad term used to describe a strategy to curb, prevent, and stop violence. Government bodies look to take a public health approach to prevent violence, effectively treating violence as a transmittable disease that can be prevented and contained. In this effort, governments engage in several services for those who are the most at risk of committing or being victimized by violence, as well as intervening in situations where violence has already occurred. The objectives of this project were to examine the violence prevention programs of other jurisdictions in an effort to identify any notable programs, strategies, or emerging fields that might be of value to the City of San Jose and to better understand why jurisdictions chose these strategies. Another objective of the project was to examine San Jose's current approach to violence prevention in a benchmarking exercise to gain a better understanding on where our resources are currently being allocated and what strategies we are currently using. To achieve these objectives, a literature review was conducted to identify any notable academic research or case studies. Next, interviews were conducted with violence prevention teams around the country. Interviews typically took place with department directors, program managers, or those directly involved with violence prevention programs. In total, 17 jurisdictions were interviewed over the course of this project, including our local Santa Clara County partners and our neighbors in San Francisco and Oakland. Most of the jurisdictions were considered an office of violence prevention, although some jurisdictions housed their violence prevention efforts under another name or structure. For example, Oakland has a Department of Violence Prevention and Baltimore's efforts are housed within the mayor's office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement.
So in our report, we both took a...surveyed San Jose's current violence prevention efforts and looked at those of other jurisdictions. So we'll start off by just taking a quick look at what we currently do. We don't call our...we don't group our violence prevention efforts under something that we term an office of violence prevention. But we do, within our Parks Department, PRNS Department, have a very robust range of violence prevention activities. The main categories we see here, the Youth Intervention Services Group within the Parks Department, which provides the programs you see on the slide. The BEST Program, which grants out to community-based organizations to prevent violence. And also important to recognize that even outside of these efforts, broadly, city services often have a violence prevention component, whether it's our park services, library services, Viva Parks, graffiti removal. Many city services broadly can have a violence prevention component. So in our interviews with other jurisdictions, we came across eight common groups of efforts in violence prevention that we'll go through here and just say a little bit about what San Jose does in each of these areas. The main approach, and really the core of most violence intervention programs, is violence intervention. And the concept behind violence intervention is when there is an incidence of violence, having violence intervention workers that can go and do casework with the participants in that incident to try to interrupt a cycle of violence and provide services that may be useful. And these can take a number of different forms. It can be street-based, you know, you can have violence intervention workers out in the community working with community partners to identify people who may be at risk of violence. It can be school-based, working with school organizations, or it can be hospital-based. And hospital-based, you know, if someone comes into a hospital who's been a victim of violence, it can be referred to a violence intervention worker. And San Jose does all three of these. We have a street-based violence intervention, school-based violence intervention, and hospital-based violence intervention. Second, the second...the next two, employment programs and case management, are often partnered with violence intervention work. You know, once violence intervention workers identify somebody who is at risk for violence and can be diverted from that path, common tools that jurisdictions use to try to accomplish that are employment programs, especially for youth, to connect youth with jobs or even older individuals to provide them with coaching or support to help them get a job. And case management is, you know, can include some of that employment assistance, but more broadly, working with people to connect them with public services that may address their issues, you know, or contributors to violence. The next group, community organizing, you know, widely practice strategy of going into communities, building neighborhood associations, building community groups that can advocate for themselves, that can help, you know, help keep the community safe and can, you know, be advocates for receiving city services that can help their neighborhoods. You know, this is our...the Project Hope program in PRNS is...would fall into this category. Youth enrichment, the idea that connecting youth with positive activities, often in the arts, can help divert them from violence. The Digital Arts Program is an example in San Jose of, you know, where we do this. And the last three here are, I would say, the categories on the first slide are very common. The last three here are less common across the jurisdictions we interviewed or are areas where there's really emerging work happening. In the area of gun violence, the violence...a lot of the violence intervention work in the category on the first slide, a lot of that is aimed at preventing gun violence. But in this category, we found that there are other strategies specifically targeting gun violence that jurisdictions are pursuing. Often, it involves, you know, given the powers of local jurisdictions, often involves advocating for gun regulations at higher levels of government in cases where local jurisdictions are able to enact local regulations. It can mean local ordinances to promote gun safety, like safe storage ordinances. And it can also extend to gun safety work. Some jurisdictions, for example, Austin, contract with a nonprofit to provide gun safety education. In San Jose, this is an area where we have done work in recent years. You pass a number of ordinances related to gun safety, advocate, you know, monitor legislation and advocate at higher levels of government. And also, the gun violence prevention ordinance that the council passed a few years ago and that the staff has been implementing. Gender-based violence, this...there are a number of strategies jurisdictions are taking to apply some of the same principles that we've applied to, you know, violence in general, specifically to gender-based violence. Often involves, you know, an advocacy or case management aspect, connecting survivors of domestic violence with advocates after the incident. And can also involve preventative education. I think San Jose is active in this area, too. The Police Department has a domestic violence advocate that works out of the Family Violence Center. And per the council's budget direction in the current year, we...staff is developing a program to provide preventative services for domestic violence. And finally, policy work. You know, many of the systems that violence prevention programs engage with are multi-jurisdictional, like the criminal justice system spans across multiple agencies. And multiple other jurisdictions we've interviewed pointed to the importance of that kind of inter-jurisdictional collaboration and systems change. And sometimes, this is kind of a...the work on those issues is often a collateral assignment. It's...there's...there are, in many jurisdictions, it's...they don't have staff that are devoted to this. But it's, I think, widely realized that it's important work that needs to be done. So find...three findings from this, from the following eight categories. First one, San Jose currently implements a robust set of violence prevention strategies, which include the most common, well-studied violence prevention approaches found in other jurisdictions. So it's...we cover most of the ground that's covered in other jurisdictions here in San Jose. Violence prevention offices in other jurisdictions typically focused on program implementation and direct service delivery, but there are examples of offices that put a greater focus on policy work and systems change. For example, Baltimore actually has a division within their violence prevention office that is staffed with dedicated policy staff to focus on that kind of intergovernmental coordination. Finding three, domestic violence prevention programs and gun safety programs are not as common as other violence prevention approaches among jurisdictions interviewed, but are emerging areas of interest for violence prevention work. Finally, we also took a look at when we asked questions when we interviewed other organizations about their...the budgets and the investment in this work. And here, we've represented that data both per capita and by violent crime rate. So you can see, per capita, San Jose is about the middle of the pack in the organizations we interviewed. But given our relatively low violent crime rate compared to other jurisdictions, if you look at our investment per violent crime, it's quite a bit more significant. And two final findings, based on just kind of our observations about budgeting, staffing, and organization. Offices of violence prevention are located within a wide variety of different locations within their respective... within their respective organizations. As Alan mentioned, some of them are offices, some of them located within a city manager's office or a mayor's office, some of them are separate departments. A few of them were actually located within police departments, although that's not common. And, you know, here in San Jose, we have, we have ours within, within our Parks Department. So it, there's really not a common organizational structure. It can, it can vary widely. And finding five, most jurisdictions use a combination of in-house and contracted services of the jurisdiction interviewed. San Jose has the highest number of in-house staff. I think all jurisdictions have a, a combination of in-house staff and contracted, contracted services. Sometimes, I, I think part of, part of the, the reason why we may have a higher proportion of in-house staff is just the length of time that we've had this program and the consistency of the investment. Other organizations, they have programs that are more reliant on grant funding or have more variable funding. So in-house staff can be, can be easier in that circumstance. And that's, that's the end of our presentation, but we're here for questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We're going to go to public comment. Tony, do we have any public comment before we go to council members?
Poncho Guavera and Angel Aliano, please come on down. First one to the microphone, start speaking, the next person can just line up.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Poncho Guavera. I'm the Executive Director of Sacred Heart Community Service based here in San Jose, and I had the pleasure of serving on the steering committee of the, of the reimagining Public Safety Community Advisory Council, and I was the co-author of the report that you received nearly two years ago. One of the things that happened during that process is we did not prescribe a specific administrative unit or structure for the city to actually implement the dozens of recommendations that came from our community process. And that was really specific because we felt it was the role of, of the institution and your leadership and, and the statements that, that your predecessors on, on that council and those of you that, that remain on, on this council, to be able to determine how we would be able to sit through those and make sure those things were realized someday. Realizing that we weren't seeing a ton of progress on that, we made some recommendations. We've been working really effectively with the city manager's office to look at what could be the different structures that could make sure that we're actually looking at the kind of interventions and being able to be a place where we could look at the, at the place where we can work on policy, work on coordination interdepartmentally, and also with, between different jurisdictions to make sure these ideas can actually take root. That way we could also see program interventions that are effective, cost-effective, and actually mindful of trying to divert people from the criminal justice system as we look at, at addressing the root causes, being able to make sure that they're effective and efficient interventions, and making sure that we're able to do this work on an ongoing basis. So I want to thank you for, you know, for the work and the research that, and particularly working, you know, with the city manager's office to try to come up with, with this report that you have today. And also ask you to support the memo that Vice Mayor has actually committed to actually look at, how can we further this in the budget process and making sure that we're able to advance these really needed reforms that we need, especially even in a tough budget year, being able to look at how we could also make some efficient changes in our systems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Angel Aliano with Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, an alliance of community-based organizations working to support thriving and equitable communities in Santa Clara County. As representatives and close partners of several CBOs who provide crucial violence prevention services to our community, we strongly support the memo from Vice Mayor Camay, whose recommendations may open the door to additional investments in prevention and intervention. As SVCN mentioned in our letter to City Council yesterday afternoon, we hope that council will direct staff to work with community stakeholders, including SVCN, the Real Coalition, BEST Providers, and grassroots community leaders with lived experience in, in justice systems, and to work with county, work with the county, I should say, to develop an aligned plan and to generate specific ideas and programs to generate, I should say, that can be considered by council during the FY25 budget process. Investments in prevention and intervention, especially as alternatives to unnecessary policing and incarceration, are among SVCN membership's highest policy priorities in 2024. So we urge you to move forward with Vice Mayor Camay's recommendations and to continue pursuing alternatives to policing that will keep our communities safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's good to see you running this meeting. Reminds me of the County Board of Education. I want to begin by thanking staff for putting together this very informative report as we try to drill down and address the root cause of violence and, and crime in our neighborhoods. It's important that we know we're, we're keeping up with best practices. As many on the council know, I myself was gang impacted, and it was through the help of strong workforce development programs and city resources that I was able to break out of this cycle of violence. And I appreciate Work to Future's role as a partner in the Youth Empowerment Alliance and the San Jose Works program for bringing workforce develop, a workforce development component into our violence prevention efforts. I strongly believe that the creation of viable economic pathways is truly a sustainable answer to the worst evils of poverty, including gang violence. Something that caught my eye was the immediate success of San Francisco's Youth Empowerment Program. On page eight, the report says that in the first two years of the operation, 92% of participants stopped engaging in street violence. And 76% of participants exited with long-term employment, which is amazing. Does staff have comparable numbers for similar San Jose Works and Work to Future programs? And if, if so, is there an understanding of how we could compare these, these standards?
We did not, we didn't conduct a comparison as part of this report.
Thank you. Andrea Flores Shelton, Deputy Director in PRNS. Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. We can work with Work to Future to get that information and look at it against San Francisco. We haven't done that. And we are excited that we will be embarking on evaluation of our own youth intervention programs in the coming year. That's been something that an audit a couple of years ago pointed out, and we've been trying to go through the procurement process for that, but in the short term, we can look at our programs against San Francisco and get back to you.
No, that's, that's great. Is there, do we have any understanding of why their program was successful, or are we intending to reach out to them to ask these questions?
Yes, we, we interviewed them as part of this, as part of this effort. I, I don't think we've, we haven't really drilled down on the, the details of that program that we, it's more of a survey that we conducted, but can certainly, to the extent, I think one of the, the benefits of this effort was we made a lot of contacts in a lot of different jurisdictions. We had kind of a breadth, a survey of a lot of work that's being done. And to the, you know, to the extent that after we, we conducted comparison, we, we wanted to reach out and see if there, there's anything they're doing specifically in that program that we can adopt, I think that would be a great idea.
Great, great. One thing I recommend, and I always recommend this, is partners with employers. We could provide as much training as possible, but if we don't have individuals who have like accounts with the city that are willing to hire our youth, you know, you know, these are individuals who may have backgrounds, you know, we need to be working to change the perception of our system-impacted residents here in, in the, in the city. Moving into violence intervention programs, I'm curious if, looking at other jurisdictions, yielded new insights into what intervention programs are most effective. Looking at our current partnerships for the BEST program, are there opportunities to build capacity with community-based organizations for forms of outreach observed in other cities and counties?
I would say in general that our, one of the important observations of violence intervention was it's, of all the, the types of work that we looked at, it has the best empirical support. There have been multiple kind of AB studies in other jurisdictions like New York, Chicago, that show a significant effect for this work. So I think just in general, there is good empirical support as a strategy. In terms of specific program and, specific takeaways from other jurisdictions, I think it, our main takeaway is the, the three categories that we mentioned, that San Jose has quite well-developed programs in all those three categories, street intervention, hospital intervention, and street-based violence intervention. I don't, I don't know that we came up with any particular kind of programmatic improvements out of this, but just, I think, validated that we, it's, it's a very well-supported category of work. There's a lot of empirical evidence that it's, it's very effective.
Can I just add? I'm sorry. I just, we are really proud that we continue to have a community of learning here locally so that we can share best, best practices together. And then I also just want to note that we continue to be a model for other cities that are challenged. And our friends to, in the North Bay, the city of Santa Rosa will be visiting us shortly because they're having some challenges in their school. So we are a model, and at the same time, we also want to look amongst ourselves for best practices. And then finally, each city and community experiences violence differently, and so we continue, you know, Chicago has different issues than us, right? So we always look to sort of, again, what is the type of violence that we're trying to address? And then look at our community, whether it's communities of lived experience, which again, I think is a part of our CBO network, and other organizations, whether it's faith organizations and others. So again, we look inside and we, I'm happy to partner with others.
Great, thank you, Andrea, and thank you to the, to the department, you know. This is, is a topic that's very important to me, you know, and as I mentioned, unfortunately, as somebody who has been in a gang, who has experienced street violence, I truly believe that nothing stops a bullet like a job. You know, nothing stops a crime like a, a career opportunity, so I'll continue to reinforce that in, in our, in our calls. And if the Vice Mayor's okay, I'm happy to move her memo and the item. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we have Councilmember Torres next.
Great. Thank you so much for, for the presentation. And just like Councilmember Ortiz, I use services and programs of what was then called the Mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force, right? And so now it's San Jose YEAH, so I'm so glad that we have renamed it, and I know there's many folks in this room who helped rename it. And I continue to say that I wouldn't be here as a city council member if it wasn't for the city and county resources and programs that, that kept me and my other friends on track. However, a lot of my friends ended up falling through the cracks, right? And that's why I continue to push for, for these amazing programs for, for our community. So I do have a couple of, of questions. Hopefully, we're, you're able to answer them. I, I got an easy one here. At the last PIS-FIS meeting, I know that we hadn't awarded the, the, the contract, the grant to the, to, to the organization that was going to do our pilot program for intimate partner violence. Have we, have we already awarded that, that grant?
No, councilmember, we haven't. We're still conducting a procurement process for that particular project.
So, so hopefully that happens, that happens soon?
Our, I think we would anticipate that it would happen within the next two months.
Okay. Great. And then, when it comes to gender-based, gender-based violence or intimate partner violence, how do we work with our county partners?
I think that's a, I think there are probably a number of answers to that question. I think on, the, the first answer is probably through, with respect to the police department's efforts. The, you know, as I, as I mentioned, they have a well-developed, you know, advocacy resources within the Family Violence Unit, and I know participate with our county partners on both domestic violence and sexual assault issues to ensure that there's good communication through the criminal justice system. For, for this project, we had the opportunity to talk with the county's Office of Gender-Based Violence Prevention. And I know they, can, they do a lot of work in terms of public education and convening different partners on this, on this issue. So we were, we were able to benefit from their observations in, in this report. I, I don't know, is there any particular, any particular area of coordination you're interested in? Those are the ones that, that come to mind.
Okay, no, great, thank you. We can definitely talk a little bit more offline about that, because I did want to elaborate that, I know that, you know, with all the amazing things that are going on with our PRNS and, and dealing with our community, I know that there's some, there's some stuff that, that falls through the cracks. And I think, I think you've heard of me say it before at PIS-FIS and NSC and other, you know, other, other committees or on this, on this council is, is, are we, are we developing targeted programs to address violence prevention within our LGBTQ community? Because I know that was a little bit absent in the, in the report, and I know that I, me as an LGBTQ person and member of the community, it's a, it's a grave concern, and especially, as you could imagine, you know, with the, the new toxic environment that we have, a lot of our under-18 youth are now scared, or scared to be who they are, or are being bullied. So I'm just wondering if, if, if we have a, something that's coming down the pipeline for our LGBTQ youth or community?
Yes, thank you. That's a, that's a great question. I, I think one of the things that we can point to is, in the, the domestic violence project that we're currently engaged in, the, the project contemplates that we would do community outreach to design a set of domestic violence preventative programs. And so the, the contract, the part, part of the procurement that we're currently undertaking is to find a, you know, a, a partner organization to assist us with that outreach. And we're, I think, the, recognize as part of that outreach that reaching, reaching communities that may be historically underserved or may not have had as much of a, of a voice in local government is very important, and that specifically calling out as part of that, that effort, reaching out to LGBTQ communities to help us design domestic violence prevention programs that meet the needs of that community, as well as, you know, others that we've identified. So I think that's, that's one example of, of something that we're currently working on. I don't, just thinking back over the jurisdictions that we've talked to, I don't recall that we, we came across any violence, specifically violence prevention program that was specifically focused on, on the LGBTQ community. But I think that's, that's really a very good question, and, you know, we're, we're probably, we can do, because we've, I think we've developed a number of contacts and resources through this work, and be happy to do a, do a scan and see if we can find anything of that nature that other jurisdictions are, are currently implementing.
And if I can just add, just in terms of youth violence and the intersectionality with LGBTQ, I think we are building our capacity, and I think our BEST providers do have a level of expertise, whether it's Bill Wilson or other community groups, that understand the intersectionality, right? Our, our, our youth are not monolithically heterosexual, right? There's all sorts of diversity within our community, so I think we do a good job, and I think you raise a good point in terms of things we can emphasize and look for in terms of expertise within our, again, our community of learning with BEST and our own staff. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you to the speakers today, and I know we've also gotten some emails regarding this topic. And thank you, Councilmember Ortiz, for moving my memo. I think this is, as we look at the challenges that we face coming up, I, I think that this is a great opportunity to look at potential options and, you know, increase investments where possible. And, you know, a lot of intervention, I think, is done, and I think more can be done in, in the area of prevention. So thank you for everyone who... So, thank you for everyone who participates in this, and I think that, you know, at some point, we really can get moving on creating those investments that pay really, really high dividends. Councilmember Ortiz mentioned how there's nothing better than a job to stop a bullet, and I think that that is something that I think we need to really take to heart because it is true. So, with that, we're ready to vote. Tony?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you for everyone who came up for this item. Moving on to the next item, which is item 3.5, support on Proposition 1, and I think we're having a verbal presentation by Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would actually ask staff to come down in case the council has any questions. The mayor and Councilmember Cohen brought this forward to the Rules Committee so the city could take an official position on Proposition 1, and they ultimately moved that forward to the full council, as the full council is the body that makes those decisions. We were given direction to bring it forward in a matter in which we would know if the county had taken action on this proposition. So again, as I said during orders of the day, we've been unable to ascertain if or when the county is going to bring this forward to their own board, but we put it on the agenda today since Election Day is nearing and the council may want to take up deliberations. Staff has attached the analysis from the Legislative Analyst Office, nonpartisan financial and policy institution in Sacramento, and if there's any questions, Sarah Zerade and Zane Barnes are here for questions.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I have a few cards for item 3.5. Vic, so when you hear your name, please come on down. First person in the microphone can just begin speaking. I have Vic "Alex" Sten, I can't, it starts with an S, Vinoj, Jordan Muldaugh, and I have an anonymous one for 3.5. So again, that's Vic, Alex, Vinoj, Jordan, and Anonymous. Go ahead.
So my name is Vico Jackian. I'm here, I'm involved with a lot of organizations. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I hope you take a position against Proposition 1, and I'll explain why. So though this bill is getting advertised or PR'd as a bill that will provide services for veterans, it's got, frankly, that's just a hook or an enticement. It's got an underlying purpose, and that is to take, divert $700 million from mental health services and an additional $140 million to be provided to the state administration to administer Proposition 1. What does that impact? It takes significant services away, frankly, it takes it away from all of you because this county will lose several millions of dollars, and that'll deplete the money that they use on services. The group that's getting the $140 million to the administration is double what they're getting now, and they're the group in past reports that have been identified as having come up short in their ability to work on efforts around then Prop 63. The group that's affected, two groups are affected. The small counties and larger counties will be affected because they have a greater reliance on Mental Health Services Act funds, and the behavioral health departments will get affected. The folks who have developed programs over the last 20, 10, and 15 years, their money's going to go away. What do you think that'll do for staff morale and professional morale when they're sitting there with far less money and told their programs didn't mean anything? I could go through a list of the programs you'll lose for Mr. Torrey's benefit. One of the programs-
Thank you, next speaker.
Thank you.
Honorable Vice Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Alex Zetinsky. I'm the CEO of the San Jose Downtown Association. I am here today to speak in support of Proposition 1. SJDA of the Downtown Association has recently added a social impact team to the already-existing Groundworks team. The CIT team specifically reached out to our houseless individuals, trying to better understand their needs and connecting them with programs and services. If a client suffers moderate or severe mental health issues, we often do not have any effective tools to help the individuals, aside from trying to talk to them and sometimes referring them to emergency medical services where they're really not supposed to be, but that's really the only place we have to send them if there's a severe situation. Safe places and permanently supportive housing where clients are taken care of properly are very needed, and Proposition 1 will be a critical investment in the well-being of our community and a proactive approach to addressing mental health needs. Just for your knowledge, the California Downtown Association, which is the association that campaigns all the business improvement districts in the state of California and the West Coast, are supporting Proposition 1 for that reason. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you for your commitment to the community's welfare.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kamai, my name's Ally Victorine, and I'm a resident of D-7. I'm a neighborhood advocate. So after doing my personal research, I have decided to support Proposition 1, the bond measure for mental health treatment centers, although I do have some concerns and questions that I think it's important to consider. So as a leader and volunteer in D-7, I have seen firsthand the homelessness crisis, and I know that there are many individuals who are suffering from mental disorders that hopefully could be treated and stabilized with proper medical attentions. These individuals heavily impact our neighborhoods as well. First and foremost, these individuals need society's assistance to get well. Secondly, the neighborhoods they affect with their actions need relief. It has been supremely frustrating to notify all of the available resources, such as the county care teams and the trust teams, to try to help these people who are in obvious distress, and yet still they remain on our streets. I hope that Proposition 1 will provide that support for these individuals and that the intention to reform a system that is not working for those in need is successful. Bottom line, we need more hospital beds, treatment centers, and interim housing to move the needle on this crisis, and that is why I support Proposition 1. But I'm also concerned about the unintended consequences. I understand that Prop 1 will be funded by moving away money from existing county programs, and this is a concern. How will this transition take place? Will it impact effective treatments that are already in place? How will, will the state be picking up that slack for those?
Thank you, next speaker.
Jordan Muldaugh, District 3. I think the council should consider not supporting Proposition 1. Few reasons. One is just on the practical side, it's probably going to pass anyway. The support side has raised $10 million already and spent $1 million. The against side has raised $1,000, so it's probably going to pass, so why spend staff time further supporting it? It's also just removing flexibility from the county because they're clawing back 5% of funds that are currently given to counties and then placing additional stipulations on how the rest of the money can spend. Each county is different and is going to have different needs, and this, placing these restrictions just seems unnecessary for all the counties, which is why, you know, I think it's interesting that the county has not made a position on it. I think if the county was in favor, that might be a different story, but given that they haven't given a position, I feel like the city should not take a position in support of it. And then, what's the last thing? I forgot what my last thing was, so I think you should consider not supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. I come here in support of Proposition 1. I think it's very crucial that we deal and put a lot of effort into treating the mental illness. It affects everybody, it's like a fire, and if you don't put out the fire, it'll burn the whole thing. And there are a lot of critical problems we cannot say in one or two minutes about mental illness, but it affects everything, even our workplace, our criminal justice needs to be modified to shift it from punishment to treatment and supportive housing. So, I know there's money here and how it will be distributed and managed, you know, we cannot discuss that, I don't know much about it, but I think that's just a start. If you don't solve this problem, we are going to be destroyed, and it's going to be much more dangerous than fire, because fire can, you can always put off or you can rebuild it, but this will affect the whole generation. We are losing generations of people, and we'll be destroyed as a society, so we have to take it very seriously and do support. Everybody talks about it now, all the people running, they say they are supporting. I hope it's not lip service. We need to do more than that, and I hope that, you know, we'll make dent in this, and this worldwide problem. I came here from India in 1970, a poor country, I never heard of mental illness, I didn't even know what it was. And when I came here also, I didn't see it, but now it's prevalent, and it affected my own family and my friends, and there is not enough help. In the whole county here, if you're mentally ill, you cannot find any help. There are only two good places you can go there, that's Stanford and El Camino, and we need more of those. You can build a lot of clinics and put money there, but it's not going to do anything unless we change the laws also. We cannot allow the patients who don't have insight, they say they don't need help, they don't need treatment, you cannot let them go on the street, and this affects the whole society. And it's a whole lot more than this giving funding, so I hope, I'm really glad that, you know, city is taking part in that because-
Thank you. John Davis?
I live over on Coyote Creek. I was in Vietnam for two years. For the last eight years, I've tried to put together a veterans' community between myself and Barry Swinson, privately funded by myself and him. Eight years, we haven't had zero success. So I highly support Proposition 1, because as I understand it, it could take money away from vets that need the help, but they really haven't gotten. There's over 500 of them right here in Santa Clara County that really need our help, so I highly recommend that we support this proposition and leave the money where it's at that'll help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to council?
Thank you. We'll go now to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. I wrote memo with the mayor last month to bring this forward, and while I understand that we don't, you know, necessarily know whether the county's planning to take a position or not, you know, the election's coming up, ballots are out, so I think it's, you know, if we're going to take a position, it's now or never. You know, Prop 1 was put on the ballot to address a crisis that's been decades in the making, and we hear all the time from people who say, well, going back to the Reagan years in the '70s, as when he was governor and dismantled the state mental hospital, mental health hospital system, that we haven't really been able to provide beds for people who need support. Hospitals were closed, including our Agnew's in this area, and we've been trying to recover ever since. And what we hear from a lot of the times when we're trying to find placements for people in our mental health system is, we have resources to help, we have people to help, we don't have beds, we don't have places. A bond measure in the state to provide, to build beds and places for people is important, and this has been the priority, this is the priority in this election cycle in March of the governor and legislature. That's why they cleared the ballot for this particular measure and agreed that it would be, it should be the focus of this election, is to focus on this major issue. We had a long discussion about this at the board meeting of the League of Cities in the fall, and the League of Cities did take a support position as well. And I think it's important that we support the measure and make sure that voters know that we are trying to do all that we can to deal with a real lack of mental health services for residents in our county and state. The state has provided new tools over the years to help us, again, get people care, even allowing us to provide care for people who aren't even asking for it, but again, with a shortage of beds, we're not going to be able to provide the care that we need. So I would like to move for supporting, for the council to endorse Measure 1, or Proposition 1.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I do know that the Mental Health Services Act needs to be reformed, and there are some good things in this proposition. First of all, allowing standalone substance use treatment services are definitely a good thing. Recognizing that housing is a critical piece of treatment is a very good thing. And of course, always ensuring funding for our veterans is good because there is never enough that we can do to support our veterans who ensure our continued freedoms. However, I'm not going to be voting for us to support it. I don't think we should. There, I think the reason the county hasn't taken a position is because there are all those good things that I just mentioned, but we've had some people come up and talk about the drawbacks of this. I don't like legislating through the initiative process. It does mean that there will be fewer dollars for services, services that we all like and have begun to lean on and wouldn't want to be expanded, services like MCAT and Trust, for example. It does mean less local control, I do try to be consistent about that. Having the state take over and actually take more money for administering a proposition as opposed to letting the counties do the job that they are designated to do is a problem for me. And by the way, that 5% loss of state money in the county of Santa Clara equals $9.1 million, and already 20% of the county's Behavioral Health Services Department comes from county general fund dollars. So that's an additional $9.1 million that will have to come from the county general fund, which, by the way, I believe is projected to have quite a large deficit in this coming year. Finally, I have an issue with general obligation bonds. There are many drawbacks to those. It doesn't actually bring in new money. It just shuffles money around that we already have, and frankly, the legislature could allocate those dollars through the budget themselves as opposed to asking the voters to allocate those dollars through the budget and make us pay more over 30 years. So that six, I think it's $6 billion bond ends up costing us between up to $12 billion, but at least $9.3 billion as we're paying it off over 30 years, tying future legislators' hands on the budget. So I, for all of those reasons, I just have a real problem with us as a city supporting a proposition that ties our county's hands and provides less money, frankly, to our residents. We're almost always a donor county, and I lived in a small state, now I live in a big state, and I will tell you that small states have wonderful roads. I lived in North Dakota, great roads, they're always redoing I-94. Even though it snows there, it's, by all rights, they should have worse roads. We in California, huge state, terrible roads. Why? Because of the way that the federal government allocates interstate dollars, actually allocates highway dollars. It's not happening on a per capita basis, it happens by states, that's why our roads are worse. We are a very, very large county, one of the largest counties in the state. We're going to end up being a donor county and losing at least $9.1 million. I just don't want to see our services go away, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres?
Good afternoon, and, you know, thank you for bringing this up. I think it's a very important issue that we all need to have conversations about, right? Because we continue to see and hear, you know, the humanitarian crisis that's on our streets and in our city. And me myself, I'm truly at a crossroads with supporting- And me myself, I'm truly at a crossroads with supporting this proposition for numerous reasons, right? Where these beds and the county funding will go, I think that's, that's an important question, right? And then the other one is, is, and I'm so glad that a lot of folks here didn't make it about, they didn't tie in that homelessness is a mental health issue, because it is, it is not. We all know that it is a housing issue, we know that, right? And so we need to continue to break that stigma that our unhoused folks are the only ones experiencing mental health issues. It strikes everybody, whether you are unhoused, whether you are living in a mansion, in Japantown, whether you, you name it, it strikes everyone. And so, and so with that, I do have some very important questions, and I hope that you're able to answer them. I think one of them is, is, is there a reason why the county didn't take this issue up on their, on their meeting or their agenda?
Thank you, Councilmember Sarah Sarate, Director of the City Manager's Office of Administration, Policy and Intergovernmental Relations. We've been checking in with the county over the last couple of weeks, trying to understand when this would be taken to the board, or if a position would be taken at all, and we haven't been given a reason for why this hasn't gone to them yet.
All right. So we brought this up, so the reason why we brought this up is because we, we thought that the county was going to take a position, or that was entirely...
The direction from the Rules Committee was to bring this forward when we understood if or when the county would be putting on the agenda, but before, it was too late to take action before the actual primary. So we went ahead and put it on this agenda because of Sunshine Rules, hoping we would hear from them late last week or over the weekend, but we still haven't. That's why it's on this agenda.
All right. And the, one of the, one of the questions I do have is, Prop 1 will reallocate one-third of funding from mental health services from current services that support expanded services, which is building housing, providing treatment, and whatnot. My question is, how many people are expected to be affected by this funding allocation?
Thank you, Councilmember. I don't think that we can answer that question without seeing the analysis from the county.
All right. So everything depends on the county? Okay. Hopefully you can answer this one then. Just a few months ago, there was numerous concerns from my residents when a low-risk mental health facility was coming into the neighborhood, right? And so where would these facilities be located?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. I don't think that we know yet where the, the facilities would be located. The only information that we had was that there's certain criteria that would need to be met, but we don't know exactly what allocation would be given to any given county and where those would be located.
All right. Yeah, see, that's, that's why I'm at a crossroads. This is, I know that the, that the, that the issue is extremely important, and what's happening out in our streets and with the lack of mental health care for everyone, not just for our unhoused, but for everyone, right? Getting a, an appointment through Kaiser, I, we have Kaiser, I think some of us all have Kaiser on this, on this dais, but getting an appointment through Kaiser takes weeks and months ahead of time, right? So, you know, it's, 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 this is, it's, it's really concerning. I still haven't decided I'm going to support this proposition, but looking forward to more dialogue within our colleagues and, and see how I, how I vote, but it's definitely an issue that, that does concern me, because there's so many uncertainties. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dwan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I feel that the county hasn't fulfilled their responsibility. I used to work at Agnews with people who are mentally ill and mentally disabled, and there's about six, a population of about 1,600 people in there. And in 1996, they closed the facility, and 1,600 of those patient went out to the street. And as our population rise, there is more and more needs, but yet there is less and less beds. Now, I think it's important that we support Proposition 1, because it will build those permanent beds out there that we don't have. If you look at the population of mentally ill or mentally disabled, and you triage and prioritize those, when you triage, meaning there's a mild, moderate, and severe patient out there. Those are out there in the street, running around with no clothes on, no place to live. They, they're talking to themselves, they're in danger to the communities, they're in danger to themselves. And if we don't have those permanent beds, those people continue to be suffering out there in the street. And it's behooved me that we call ourselves the humanitarian society, and these poor, poor souls, that was, some of them was born with these affliction, and yet we let them be out there in the street without any services. And I think it's important that there's, there's always give and take. Yes, I, I agree with Councilmember Torres that our society is inflicted with lots of stress, anxiety, depression, and mental illness. But we have to look at what in front of us, that every day you drive down the road, you see those who jump out in front of the cars, lucky they're, they're still alive. Those who walk around with no pants on or ripped shirts in the middle of winter, their skin is dark as the mud that out there on Coyote Creek. And I think that all of us need to support Proposition 1, and I will be supporting that because if we don't have those beds, we continue to go around in circle. It doesn't mean that we're going to take away a lot of services that is needed out there. We'll continue to strive for those funding and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foley?
Thank you. This is actually not as simple as issue as one might think. We, we certainly want permanent beds for, to treat those with mental illness, and we need to help them get off the streets, or to help those who are still housed and still have, and have mental illness as well as Councilmember Torres referred, mentioned. I too am at a crossroads. While I may vote personally on this ballot measure, I'm concerned about the city taking a position on funding that is going to take funding away from another jurisdiction. I, I'm a, I too am a strong supporter of local control, so when local control is taken away from us, and we're told what we're supposed to be doing with our dollars, it takes away the funds that we have flexibility with, which is our general, general funds. And the number, which I'm, I appreciate that Councilmember Davis calculated, 9.1 million, that's a huge number that is an impact to the county. The county already is responsible for mental health, addressing mental health issues and building these beds, and have committed to them to some level. Have they committed to the level that, that Proposition 1 will? I don't know, but it is very disconcerting to me that they have not taken a position. So I'm hesitant to say I support something that will impose restrictions on another jurisdiction, because I wouldn't want them to make the same decision about a proposal that's coming to affect the city of San Jose. So I guess I just remove myself from the crossroads, and I'm going to vote no on the city taking a yes position.
Thank you. Before I go to Councilmember, Councilmember Cohen, I just want to be clear, there is no new money. Is that correct? No new money going to be generated through this Prop 1?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So there's no changes to the tax related to the MHSA, but it would also allow the state to sell 6.4 billion in bonds?
I see. You know, I, I do believe that we do need mental health services and that reform is needed, but I too, like Councilwoman Davis, really do not, do not agree that there's no new money. I mean, the state needs to really, like, step it up and put, put in new money, because all of the services that the county has continues to be needed, but to take one away to do the other, I think it's really unfortunate. I really think that, at this point, I would suggest no position on it, because it really, it really gives a signal to Sacramento that it's just okay to move one pot for another. And I too, like Councilwoman Foley, believe that we shouldn't, like, local control is important, and we shouldn't be encouraging another jurisdiction to be tied. So I too will be voting against that. Now I'll go to Councilmember Cohen, and then Candelaus.
Do you want to, since, since you're having spoken?
Yeah, you, I, I mean, I haven't gone, Councilmember Cohen, so, thank you, I appreciate that. You know, I, I appreciate the dialogue that we're having today, and, and I also want to say my thanks to those who actually, you know, spoke out, whether it was in favor or against Prop 1. You know, the, the reality is, Prop 1 is going to be used to pay back the bonds, to which we're going to, to which we're going to be utilizing the money. So the money historically for bonds comes out of the California General Fund, not these special funds like the MHSA. So the rates are historically better when they're taken from the general fund, so the payback is actually a little bit more cost-effective for, for residents. So that being said, we don't have as much, the, the interest rate that California is going to be paying on, on Prop 1 is going to be higher, because we're taking them directly from Prop 1. So that's, that's, that's a caveat that's important to know. You know, I, I also understand the fine balance, because a lot of residents feel frustrated with our mental health system, with our partners in the county, with us at City Hall, because we're not doing enough. We have folks who are suffering from mental health and substance abuse issues on our streets, and, you know, this is, this is the state's approach to trying, trying to do something. And while I understand the difficulties of, of not infringing on our partners at the county and their, and their funds, you know, I, it's, rather than taking no position, would the council be okay with deferring the decision on supporting this for, let's say, a week, while perhaps, I don't know if, if, if staff has an idea of when the county's going to be hearing it? So, so maybe we can defer it by a week rather than stating no position, because, you know, I, I think it's, it's worth a consider, I think it's worth considering, and, and I don't want to pass up an opportunity to actually make, make a decision on this, but maybe it might be prudent to, to, to know, and, or if somebody else on, on the dais has any information, I, I don't know if the county's going to be discussing there, if they're going to take a position, but it might be worth, you know, deferring for a week, I mean, or two, but, but it's, the closer we get to March 5th, the, the less impactful this gets, so, just throwing that out there.
Is that a substitute?
Well, no, it'd be a friendly amendment that I'd be offering to the, to the maker of the motion.
Okay.
Look, I, I don't, I'm, I'm fine with deferring it, I mean, I, we can wait a week, obviously if it's not next week, then there's no point.
Right.
Because week after, there's no council, I mean, we, we have to have decision by next week if we're going to. Honestly, it's not, you know, the, this isn't one of those so important issues in terms of whether the city takes a position or not, that I want to, you know, have this long, you know, drag down discussion. If people are uncomfortable with the, with the proposition, then, you know, we shouldn't take a position. I just want to comment on a few things I've heard from others. We have a very few opportunities to get billions of dollars of funding to build beds for mental health. That, that's really what the state is trying to do here, and figured out ways to try to fund that fund, that, get that, that funding. When we use a bond, which I understand, you know, Councilmember Davis has commented, she doesn't necessarily like using a bond, but, bonds, but obviously, this is why, there's a reason why school districts, cities, it's a reason why our Measure T for all of our roads was a bond, is a reason why, I mean, we, bonds are utilized in this manner, because you pay back over 30 years, which you can build in a, in five, and so it's really, you know, I mean, obviously, there's a cost to that, but we do need the $6 billion to build hospital beds, to build mental health beds. The proposal in the, in the, in Proposition 1 is for 11,500 beds, and even if we, we don't know where they're going to go, we never do when we pass a bond measure, really, we never know exactly where the allocations are going to be, but if we proportionally, were to get funding proportionally by population, that's about 700 to 750 beds in Santa Clara County. Obviously, that would go a long way to making, you know, making an impact if that, if that worked out, and I just want to make sure, you know, that we don't pass up an opportunity, which isn't going to come around multiple times, I don't think, to, to be able to fill the gap that we know is, is the major impediment to serving a lot of people, which is the lack of space. And I, I understand that there's often trade-offs when we make these decisions, and the, the trade-off discussion is one that, you know, I, I know that the, that the, our, our representatives and others in the state legislature were, you know, took seriously as they were figuring out how they were going to move this forward and fund it, and what this meant for some trade-offs. But I do think that funding these beds is important. On the other hand, I'm not, you know, this is, whether the city takes a position or not, isn't the most important thing as far as this bond measure goes, and if the will of the body is to wait a week and see if the county, I mean, honestly, the county has one more week, they'd have to either be doing it today, which they're not, or do it concurrent with our meeting next Tuesday, which, you know, we may find out before we actually discuss it next week. So I don't know whether deferring makes a difference, but I guess you can...
Just a point of order, the, the county doesn't meet next week as well as the 20th, so their next meeting isn't until February 27?
So defer, I'm not, so I'm not convinced deferring makes any difference, that's kind of what I was trying to say. So I, I, I mean, I, I'm happy to go ahead with the vote, and look, I'm not, you know, it's not, if people, the will of the body is not to support taking a position, now I'm, I, I'll, you know, that, I'll be satisfied with that, but I do think we ought to, you know, move forward with the motion. That's my preference.
Thank you. Councilmember Dwan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The fact is that we only have 12 psychiatric beds per 100,000 residents. 12. And if we make no changes, we'll continue to have the poor services from the county, and we'll continue to be stagnant, and we'll continue to have the problem that we have in our society. And I just want to end with that note. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else who wants to speak, so Tony will vote.
Point of order, can I just ask?
Yes.
The motion on the floor is to take a position of yes on Prop, it wasn't to defer or anything like that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Motion fails with four voting for, five against, and two absent.
Thank you.
And I need to say the votes out loud for, people who can't see the screen, I have Kamai voting against, Jimenez voting against, Torres against, Cohen for, Ortiz for, Davis against, Dwan for, Candelaus for, Foley against. Thank you.
Thank you. And two absent. Okay, we're moving on to Item 3.6, preserving our progress, Guadalupe River Trail.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Typically, we handle this at the Rules Committee. This is a workload analysis based off of memorandum through the mayor and Councilmember Davis. We have greenlit the memorandum, and I would ask John Ciccarelli and Omar Passan to join me down here if the council has any questions. The administration can do this work. It was not currently in staff's work plan, however, and the resources that would need to be allocated to do that are only available to the end of the year. So the council would need to bring that up through the budget process.
So the council would need to bring that up through the budget process. And then also in the workload assessment, it does outline some of the trade-offs that staff is currently thinking through if we were to devote these resources to the Guadalupe versus some of the other parts of the city where we see blight.
Thank you. Tony, are there any public comments?
Merrily Jennings, Mark Lewis, David Pendory, Alex Stodinsky, and Jordan Moldow. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Merrily Jennings, Executive Director of Children's Discovery Museum of San Jose. On behalf of the museum's board and staff, I want to thank Mayor Mahan and Councilmembers Torres and Davis for initiating the Preserving Our Progress Plan. We are immensely grateful to the City of San Jose and Caltrans for the enormous effort with the three encampments around our building and parking lots to relocate the residents into housing and for raising $2 million from the State of California to make this work possible. We express our thanks because this relocation has brought our museum tremendous relief, both emotional and financial. We're relieved to know that so many of the unhoused living around us in unsanitary conditions are now residing indoors and grateful that the level of negative activity towards our people and property has greatly decreased. Our staff is no longer facing daily situations and we can see that our visiting families are beginning to feel more comfortable taking their children from the parking lot to the museum's front doors. But right now, we are at a critical point as new tents are beginning to arrive. So I'm here to ask for your help in not backsliding. We know firsthand how hard it is to raise millions of dollars and about the risks associated with future funding if you can't show that you've maintained what you've achieved. So the proposed no-return zone and enforcement strategies are important next steps in preventing re-encampment. We urge you to vote in favor of preserving our progress plan and not jeopardize what has already been accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon. Mark Lewis with the Access Condominium Community. Our neighborhood is very near the Guadalupe River Park and Trail. Members of our community have been actively supporting and contributing to the ongoing restoration and revitalization efforts for a number of years now. Through this hard work of city, state, and private agencies and committed area residents, notable progress has been achieved. However, progress is also being lost. Repeatedly, sites that were cleared of trash, blight, drug paraphernalia have been re-encamped and then quickly deteriorated back to their original state. This is discouraging. It inhibits park revitalization, and it's expensive. We applaud this memorandum and that it recognizes that this can't continue. Please, let's take the step forward so that we can succeed in restoring and maintaining the park and trail such that it can again be used and enjoyed by the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Honorable Vice Mayor and members of City Council, Alex Zatinski, CEO of the San Jose Downtown Association. I'm here in support of the city manager's proposition to preserve the progress along the Guadalupe River. SJDA was in support of the investment the city recently made to clean up the river area and did an amazing job doing so. But we also expressed our concern that the investment may have been for nothing if we allow the conditions to revert to the same level over time. It makes sense to maintain the hard work and resources we put into making the Guadalupe River a safe area and enjoyable again for the entire community by turning the area into a no-return zone. The Guadalupe River and the trail along the river connects the entire region to San Jose and to downtown. And keeping the river and the trail clean and well-managed allows us to activate the area with bicycles, pedestrians, and runners and will create a well-needed recreational area that is safe and clean. Again, SJDA supports the city manager's proposition and urges council to approve it. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
So I haven't had the pleasure of saying this since Susan Hammer, but Madam Mayor and members of the council, Madam Vice Mayor, I've seen your happy face for the last two weeks while I've been volunteering over at the County Office of Education for the mock court. And it's been nice to see. I'm here not on the Guadalupe River Trail, which I think that's the way it was described on the agenda. I'm here for the Guadalupe River Park. This is a park. It's a park that has become the de facto outdoor homeless encampment for San Jose. There is no park. And if I'm wrong, I will do penance and I will go with any council member who wants to take me. But I will go to any park that you believe has more tents, cabins, shacks, and vandalism and damage that's been done here. We have a park ranger station. You might have thought it was owned by the same people who owned the first Church of Christ Science. Completely neglected. A carousel, neglected, not in use. Public restrooms destroyed. Retaining walls ripped out. We're not here to ask you to fix those things today, but we are asking you to preserve the progress that was made. This isn't an issue of moving people out of the park to other districts. That's already been done. There have been people who've been cared for. It would be an incredible waste of money to allow the situation to reoccur. What I'm sharing with you is a practical reason to do it. These encampments pose great public safety dangers to the motoring public on 87 and 280. We can't let this keep going on. You see those numbers. They're huge.
Next speaker?
Thank you.
Jordan Moldow, District 3. I had a question about the B section of the memo. Talks about posting park enforcement rules. Most parks, when they have signs with the posted rules, they say things like, "You can't be in here between sunset and sunrise." And so I'm hoping that that's not going to be something that's posted and enforced. Cyclists depend on the Guadalupe River Trail for commuting in and out of downtown to get home at night, to get to work in the morning. And during the winter months, it gets dark really early. And, you know, a lot of people use the Guadalupe River Trail for recreation. So it just wouldn't be very fun for them to say, "Sorry, you're not allowed to exercise in the park after dark." On the other hand, I also don't like selective enforcement either. That is not just to only apply rules against people that we don't like and then let everyone else go. So I hope that the rules that get posted and enforced will not have time-of-day restrictions on them and any other similar restrictions that are meant to only be selectively enforced against certain people and just letting other people go. For Item C, I'm curious how the River Trail Bike Patrol is being utilized and what sorts of things they currently do and what this measure is going to take them away from doing. I am happy with the idea of activating the River Trail and activating the park. I think that'll be good for everyone in the city. And finally, when the memo says that we will do abatements in a safe and humane way, I hope that it is in fact done in a humane way. I definitely hear a lot of public comments at various open forums about many abatements that don't seem to be done in a humane way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. We will now go to Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, and I want to thank people for their public comments. John, before I get into my remarks, I want to ask, how are trail rules different from park rules? And how does it help accommodate commuters?
They're not different. It's just the same name of the same thing. Oh, sorry. John Ciccarelli, Director of Park Recreation Neighborhood Services. So the park rule we'd be talking about here would be no camping.
Thank you. So I really support this. Obviously, I signed on with Mayor and Councilmember Torres. This area spans our district border, and that's why we both signed on to it. And I just want to say, I think, I appreciate the green light and I appreciate all of the discussion about we would be able to basically try this between now and the end of the fiscal year. And we need to address it in the fiscal, in the budget process, which I'm happy to do and to have a robust discussion about what this actually looks like. Because I think that this, the time between now and when we actually vote on the budget is a chance for us and for staff to actually find out what preventing re-encampment looks like in a small place in terms of resources and in, of course, that means cost, but also staff time and how it impacts other abatements, because we don't know that yet. So that's part of the reason why I want to do this, because I think we're at a point now where, I understand we don't have 4,000 spots or 6,000 spots for people to go. But I also know that when we cleared the encampment on the FAA site, we did it in phases. And I remember, and Andrea and Olympia can correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember that each phase was increasingly difficult because they were able to get people who were ready to go into housing right away in the first phase. And then the people who were more and more resistant to housing, it became more and more difficult to have people take the offer. And we did offer housing in each of those three phases, and it took nine months. And in fact, I think it was a little bit more than that. It might have been around 10 months to get everyone moved out of the FAA site. And we still have a number of RVs in that area. Just to be clear, we're not even talking about that area right now. We're talking about a different area where we took $2 million of state money and cleared encampments along the trail. And I think you heard from the Executive Director of the Children's Discovery Museum how impactful that has been for the Children's Discovery Museum, which I think we can all agree is a jewel in the crown of San Jose and something that I personally went, a place where I went very, very frequently when my children were younger, because you just, you have to have something for kids to do. And we have this great, huge place for kids to play that's safe. And you can do it when it's pouring down rain, when you can't go to the parks or don't want to go to the parks because kids would get muddy and that's a whole nother thing, which all you parents know. So I think, getting back to the point of it's safer now, people are more willing to come to one of our city properties that is an important part of childhood, I think, for San Joseans. We spent a lot of money from the state, grant money from the state, to clear this encampment. Let's give this a try and see what it takes to prevent re-encampment in this area. Because I think we need to do that going forward. Even though it was difficult in phases two and three of clearing the FAA site, they did get more and more people to agree to take housing. So there are incentives and there are disincentives. And we are providing the incentive of, "We have a place for you." The disincentive is, should be, I think, there are fewer and fewer places where you can stay outside because your impact is impacting the rest of the public. And remember that this trail, by the way, trails cost how much per mile to create, John?
I don't have that exact figure, Councilmember, but it's the most expensive thing we do.
Yeah, I think the Three Creeks Trail, we paid about $2 million a mile, if I remember correctly. And that was not even the most recent trail that was created in the City of San Jose. So even just creating the trail, not to mention maintaining the trail, is an expensive endeavor. And when it's not available to the full public for use, we're not getting the full benefit... Our residents are not getting the full benefit of the tax dollars that were used on their behalf. So with that, I would like to move acceptance of these recommendations.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilwoman Foley.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and thank you for all of the public comments. Lee, you mentioned that this is greenlit, but you also said there were trade-offs. You didn't articulate what the trade-offs are. So can you share with us what those trade-offs might be?
Sure. Some of them are on a general level outlined in the memorandum, but I would ask John to actually walk through the details.
Thanks, Lee. I think probably one of the bigger trade-offs here is we're going to have to go back in and re-abate what's shown back up. That's about 20 individuals, we believe, right now. You'll also notice in our response, we talked about going further south to Virginia Avenue. The reason for that is, first, we want to clear the expected area, Was to Julian. We think we can do that relatively quickly. And then if you just go further south towards Virginia, it's a whole lot of other encampments. And we figure, as long as we have the resources there, we should start working on that as soon as we free up the other space. Part of the problem is, unlike the Columbus example, at least the initial part of the Columbus example, we had lined up a lot of housing. Now, unfortunately, that was very public and it actually attracted a whole lot more people to the site, way beyond the housing slots we had. And many of those people are there today still. We don't have any housing beyond what's the traditional system for this exercise that we're about to do. So they could be told, you know, "There's the shelter." But the purpose here is, we're not going to have a 72-hour notification. It will be an immediate, "You have to leave today. You can't stay." We'll be on there every day. So we're expecting we'll be able to catch people pretty quickly before they gather too many extra belongings or set too deep of roots. So hopefully, that won't mean we'll have to store a lot of property, but we will store property if we need to, if people can't take it with them immediately. This site also is lucky enough to have the support of a bike patrol. This is a temporary program along Guadalupe through the secondary enforcement unit. That unit is not guaranteed to be staffed every single day. It's a volunteer signup. It gets pretty good stats for signup. And if you want to know those numbers, Chief Joseph is here and can talk more to that. But there will be an impact to the neighborhoods around here because the people that are there will be required to leave, but we don't have anywhere for them to go for housing. So we don't know what that's going to look like. And so that's one of the things we talk about in doing some metrics and trying to figure out where people go. When we did this initial abatement some months ago, we definitely saw impacts in the neighborhood. Because even though we had housing lined up through this $2 million grant, about half those people refused. They didn't want to take it. So those people floated into the neighborhoods or through the northern end or the southern end of where this trail section is. We would expect to see more activity like that. And that's a trade-off that's going to have an impact in the neighborhoods. And while I hear some of the folks who live in the condos and apartments nearby saying, "Great, clean up the trail," I'm just going to let you know, those folks will be coming up out of the trail and onto the streets. We don't know where they'll go. We don't know where they'll end up. But since we don't have someplace to give them to go, they're going to go somewhere. And so that's a significant trade-off. And then, of course, you know, there's a cost to this. That's a trade-off. And if we want to continue it past June, there's a cost to it because the secondary unit isn't funded past that point. So lots of things to consider while we'll keep that trail area clear. And I feel pretty confident that we can with this plan as long as we have at least decently consistent SEU support from the police department. Because realistically, if someone says, "No, I'm not going to move," it's not our staff that's going to make them move, right? We're going to have to have that support. So without that, I don't think the program's that successful.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, John. That is one of the trade-offs, is the unhoused who are living along the creek. the unhoused who are living along the creek, they need to go somewhere. We don't have the housing for them, so they're likely to go further into the neighborhoods, or into the downtown core, or further out into other parts of the, the city and other districts. I, I'm concerned about the staff resources. So, what kind of additional staff resources will be needed, and, and primarily, will this take staff's energy away from focusing on the EIHs that are included in our discussion today, Saroni, Villadel Oro, and Cherry? And, and then financially, what kind of an impact will these have, will this have on those three EIHs, which is temporary housing, which is something that we could do to move these folks into temporary housing?
Sure. The, I mean, those, those housing developments aren't done yet, so there won't be any impact to them in the immediate sense, not in the short term at any rate. I know there's, there's an item to talk about that on 8.1 as well. And it, and there's a blue memo sort of saying, "Hey, let's replicate this model down there a little bit." The only thing I would caution you about in that is that, we don't even know if this is gonna work. We've never done it before. So, we, we don't know what we don't know. So, we gotta learn some before we talk about scaling and making sure we're doing it right. I do believe this section is small enough, and it's confined enough. It's a very kind of linear space for us to, to try to manage, which is different than managing various different spots throughout a neighborhood or an area of the town. It's, it's a little easier for us. So, I think the main impacts to us will be, there's an unscheduled abatement that we'll have to do, right? I talked about at least 20 people in this corridor, and at least that many more down to Virginia. That takes away from other abatements we would do. And then, to the degree that people start popping up in neighborhoods, and, and residents get concerned and start calling, or things go sideways, it's gonna, it's gonna require those resources to go to those locations as well, to try to resolve issues, which happened the first time we abated this. We had a quick, you know, kind of a bunch of little fires pop up that we had to run and try to get people to relocate again. They'd relocated off the trail, then they relocated into some very sensitive area, or into a right-of-way, or into one of our easements that we enforce. And so, we had to re-relocate, not relocate, and we don't relocate people. We had to make them leave, my point. So, all that takes extra resources that aren't provided through this. And again, something we will definitely want to measure and report back to you and say, "Hey, well, this is what happened. This is what, what we found when we did X. This is what Y was," and so on. So, all that's data we want to be able to gather and sort of get a good sense of whether this makes, if it's worth scaling, if it's worth replicating, if it's worth continuing along this area, et cetera.
So, when it comes to the budget impact, we're really talking about expanding funding through this current fiscal year. But, will we be required to, to make this program successful in the next few months of this year? Are we pulling general fund dollars that would be going somewhere else, particularly for our EIHs or other beautify SJ cleanups, or anything like that?
No, not, not here over the short term. It wouldn't impact that.
Okay. Omar, do you have anything to add about its impact on the work you're doing with the emergency interim housing?
I think Omar Passan's Deputy City Manager, sorry. I think John covered it, actually.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the conversation. I look forward to input from my colleagues.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. Let me just start by saying, I will support this motion, and there's a couple reasons. One is, at the Rules Committee, we talked about the special nature of the site for, you know, obviously, you know, there is a special nature of the site in terms of the, the trail and city amenity that's there, but also the special nature of the fact that we did get, received state money that, to clean it, and we don't, we want to prove that, that that money was, you know, invested appropriately and wasn't a waste. So, I, I will support this motion, but I'm, I'm gonna talk a little bit about why it makes me very nervous. And I'm gonna, I'm going to be making some of these same comments and questions when we get to the EIH item later. But also, for the sake of people who are in the room, I think it's important to make some of these comments on this item now. You know, I represent a community also with major homeless issues in parks and community amenities. And I will point out, I know that, you know, everybody who lives near a location thinks their location is unique, so I don't want to try to claim any uniqueness, except to say that, you know, Penitentiary Creek Trail, which connects the only bar station in the city, up to Allen Rock Park and the Ridge Trail, it's the only connection between a bar station and the Bay Area Ridge Trail and the entire Bay Area, and has a lot of use on that trail, and it's a great amenity, has a growing homeless problem along it. We, I receive emails every day from people who are saying, "I can't walk in the park anymore. I can't go to Penitentiary Creek Park. I'm, I don't like to be in, on Penitentiary Creek Trail." And we're, we're trying to, to address it. And so, just want to follow up on your question. I mean, you made a comment about, it takes away from other abatements. It might make it harder to manage other spots. So, I, I'm just, I get very nervous, because, you know, obviously, we all have spots that we are worried about and that we're dealing with. And what I want to understand a little bit more to follow up on, Councilmember Foley's question, is the trade-off question. You know, in terms of resources, are we going to be, you know, be told for a while, we don't have the resources to, to work on these other areas that we've been trying to make progress on? I just want to understand that a little bit better.
Well, it's a great question. When it comes to abatements, throughout the year, we get several unscheduled, unplanned abatements. So, typically, what happens, for example, in this situation, if there was another abatement scheduled in that timeframe, it's not that that won't happen, it will just happen a little bit later, right? It will still happen. It just, the schedule just has to shift to accommodate a ti, a specific timeframe for this one, just like we would have done when we did the original abatement here. We would have kind of cleared the calendar in that space and said, "We've got to be here and do this," just like we do with Valley Water when they're doing their flood work. You know, we try to schedule those things, but all these unscheduled things pop up. And that's not abnormal. And so, I wouldn't say this one's that abnormal. 20 people re-encamped. It's gonna take, it's gonna take a little bit of time and effort, depending on, on how, how much debris and everything is there to remove. But I, I think we can accommodate it relatively easily without disrupting the schedule seriously, but it, there'll be a bit of a disruption, because we have to find a space to slot it in. That means something's gotta give.
Okay. And just back to Penitentiary Creek, just as an illustration of, of the difficulty. First, we had Coyote Creek, which we had to clear because of the Valley Waters project, and also because of the encroachment on neighborhoods there. And I expressed concern at that meeting, that that's going to cause Penitentiary Creek to get worse, which it did. Penitentiary Creek got worse, and we have areas along Penitentiary Creek, right of, right of, along a whole series of single-family homes, where people were living within 50 yards of homes, even closer than that. We have cleared a, a significant portion of just that one area along Penitentiary Creek Trail. The result is, and I, I describe this as like squeezing a balloon. You, we're not making the problem smaller. We're squeezing a balloon. So, people are moving from one area and just spreading somewhere else. So, what happened now is that the eastern part of Penitentiary Creek is, has a growing issue, because the western part of Penitentiary Creek was, was cleared. We also have heard today that people are now coming back to that western part of Penitentiary Creek, which we're gonna have to figure out how to deal with. And we could, you know, create, you know, these, create, these preserve-your-progress type of motions at, at a whole bunch of sites across the city. We'd all like to do that. But I, as we squeeze this balloon, it, it goes back to something else that was, that I think, I think you said, John, which is that, that we have fewer and fewer places for people to go. Or, actually, it was something that Councilmember Davis said, I'm sorry. You said, that the, the thing is, that creates a disincentive, because there are fewer and fewer places for people to go. What I think is that in the short term, when you create fewer and fewer places for people to go, is that the fewer and fewer places that are left become more, much more difficult to manage, and much more impactful to the community. So, I just want us to be thoughtful about this, because there are parts of our city, and I, I don't doubt everybody has some in their district, but I know, I'm only gonna speak about the ones in mine, that are significant impacts on the community around it, that are significant impacts on recreation, that have people living by community centers and parks all across our city. And so, I just, I'm, I'm nervous as we begin to say, "These are off limits," because we are causing problems for residents all throughout our city as we do this, without the solution. I'm gonna, you know, we, I've talked about cruise drive. It's an RV issue, not this traditional encampment issue. But over the weekend, because there were some vehicles that needed to be towed, because they were stolen or disabled, people who were there, we, I think I mentioned at a meeting a couple weeks ago, there were 42 RVs on that street, one quarter mile in my district. Over the weekend, 30 of them left, because they heard that there was gonna be some vehicles taken, coming soon to a street near you, because those 30 vehicles are going somewhere, right? We, the people on that street might be happy that there's 30 fewer vehicles there. We're gonna get it cleaned up. Doesn't mean they won't come back there. It also means they're going somewhere, until we have places for them. So, just expect that you'll be hearing from people. I know I will, it probably what's gonna happen is they're still gonna spread out in the area around that area, and stay in my district. But, this is what concerns me about all of these actions that we're taking. Not that I don't believe that they're the right thing to do, and that we want to try to solve this problem, but we're not solving the problem by squeezing the balloon. And I just wanted to express that concern and point out that there are lots of sites around the city that have traditional, similar recreational issues, similar problems. There might be some scale differences between different sites, but I, I'm just, wanted to express that as we move forward on this item. Like I said, I'll support this item, but I, I want us to be thoughtful as a council, thinking holistically about the city as we try to deal with this major issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you. Thank you so much for, for that presentation. And Councilmember Davis, I actually remember when I went to the ground opening of the Children's Discovery Museum. So, I was a young kid, young brat. But here's another one. I also worked at the Children's Discovery Museum many, many moons ago, for their amazing program. So, it is a great museum, and I'm so glad that it's in downtown San Jose. And so, unfortunately, we saw the unsafe conditions of the Guadalupe River this past weekend, right? We had a nasty storm. And it is very crucial that all residents are safe, and those that live along the trail, right, have a place to go. And so, I, I really want to commend, I want to commend our, our city employees for opening up and expanding our owls during, during this storm season. But I'll talk a little bit about that, once we hit that item. I actually do have a question. I know I'm on the Brown Act, and I, I want to thank our mayor and Councilwoman Davis for submitting this, for submitting this memo and working with my office, since the Guadalupe River is actually, technically speaking, in two council districts. So, but anyways, with that, the two questions I have is, the therapeutic positions, are they currently filled?
No, they're not.
Right. And these are the positions, these are the positions that we asked for in last year's budget, correct?
That's correct, to do some type of outreach, but that did not succeed.
Okay.
That program didn't get off the ground.
All right. All right. Okay, so, with the violence prevention presentation, it is concerning that we haven't given an award to an organization, an organization to help us with what's happening with intimate partner violence. We've asked for this position to be filled since July, and it hasn't. John, I don't know if you can speak a little bit more about it, or do you have Jennifer Schimrie on?
I'm, I'm happy to speak about that. Those, the therapeutic specialists were actually in the Housing Department. Those have gone to, through two unsuccessful recruitments. So, we've been trying to continue to recruit, and I think we came to the ultimate resolution last month, that that classification and the job announcement wasn't seeking the type of individual that we would need to do that work. And this memorandum has come up, and I think Parks and Housing were already working on, how do we relook at these classifications to properly post and bring in a type of person that we would need to do this work. So, the city has continued to try and do this, but just been unsuccessful in those recruiting processes.
Okay. And we have a plan, or we're gonna make sure that these positions are filled for this, for this memo, for this, for this, for this, for this program, right?
Yeah. Although, it's, it's a little more complicated than that. So, there won't be therapeutic specialists that will be doing this work. So, what we'll, we've, we're in the very end stages of creating a new classification to support our beautify SJ work, and it's called a Community Activity Specialist, which is the same pay as a therapeutic specialist. And you're familiar with our, our categories of classifications in PRNS, having worked in PRNS. So, that's the specialist category. This new category is much better equipped, and the duties align better with doing things like abatement and working with the homeless, whereas therapeutic specialists don't do, that's not in their job description, literally. So, we have to convert the therapeutic specialist to this new position, but the new position doesn't exist yet. So, coming, I believe, the first week of March to this council will be the creation of this new position, Community Activity Specialist. In that same memo, we'll move the therapeutic specialist from housing to Parks and Rec. We'll convert him over to Community Activity Specialist. And then, what we'll likely do is do a, a higher acting, rather than doing a full recruitment. We have lots of community activity workers, so this would be a promotional opportunity for those groups, that group. We have plenty of people in that group that would be interested. So, we think we can very quickly get two people to do higher acting, get them out there in April, and start doing this work, and start collecting data, and seeing how things go, and being able to figure out whether, how we can make this whole thing work.
Great. No, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, John, 'cause, you know, I, I'm, of course, we all, again, we continue to talk about the humanitarian crisis that we're currently in, right? And we see it and hear it every single day. And, and so, for me, I feel more comfortable, I felt comfortable signing on to this memo, knowing that we are gonna be working with our unhoused community to get them the services and resources they need to, to come out of the encampment, whether it's a tiny home, a affordable housing project, whether it's, it's, you know, a casework, whatever it may be, right? That we have a plan to clear these encampments, and actually have a plan to make sure that our unhoused folks, right, get the tools and, and services they need, right? And so, I'm gonna continue to implore that we make sure that we hire these folks, 'cause it's extremely, extremely important. And so, you know, with that, I hope that my colleagues support, support this motion. Thank you.
Can I, can I offer one clarification, just to be certain? This does not offer services or housing, anything beyond what's already out there in any traditional sense, meaning shelters. But this does not have any guaranteed, or slots open and waiting. None of that is part of this program. This is strictly re-abate from the original abatement, and then keep it clear.
All righty. Well, that, yeah. Absolutely. But, again, we, we just gotta, I feel more comfortable having folks who are actually working with our unsheltered community, and that it's not our police officers who are, who are doing that. So...
Yeah. Ideally, they'll listen to our staff first, and through persuasion, we can just convince them to leave. We don't want to have to involve the police unless they're gonna refuse, they're gonna be relitrate, you know, you know, get violent and things like that. Ideally, though, we can, you know, if someone encamped overnight, and we show up in the morning and say, "Hey, John, you can't be here. You gotta go. You gotta at least be past this area or past that. You can't be anywhere along here where you see these signs." We hope that most people will work with us and cooperate with us, and that we, we won't have to be police-heavy with it.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Want to start by thanking our housing staff, who secured the grant funding that made this project possible, as well as my council colleagues, Mayor Mahan, Councilmember Torres, and Councilmember Davis, for bringing forward today's proposal. San Jose is home to many fantastic assets, including our trails and parks, even though we haven't completed the Lower Silver Creek Trail, but I hope we do one day. So, it serves us well to ensure that they are inviting, and that people feel safe when using them. I'm in agreement, in agreement with the memo, and will vote to approve the, the recommendations, though I am concerned of what my colleagues have mentioned, how it may impact our other parks, 'cause there's several parks in District 5 that have, you know, houseless in them, and, and individuals who do not feel comfortable utilizing them. And these parks matter just as well. The recommendation speaks to the, the deployment of two therapeutic specialists funded by the last budget. It's my understanding that these positions are still not hired yet, which you confirmed earlier. But when they are, will they be working on this pilot, will they be responsible for solely working on this pilot, or will their work, though it be divided up elsewhere?
Thank you, Councilmember. Initially, it'll just be focused on this. And once that space is clear, and we're holding it clear, if there's more capacity, then we would probably start moving up and down the trail, trying to do more work, or they might be able to support other teams. But every day, their first assignment would be, go up and down the entire trail, look for any new encampments, try to get them to leave, make sure the signs are still up. Part of this is, we have to post a sign no less than every third mile. We'll probably do it about every quarter mile, which starts to get a little sign-heavy, I understand. But legally, to be able to just abate without But legally, to be able to just abate without a 72-hour notice and move them, the signage has to be frequent enough. And so, we suspect, because we see this in other areas when we put up signs, signs will walk away. And so, we're gonna order extra signs and every morning if they see a missing sign, they're gonna put it back up and then look for people along this stretch. And if they find no one there, you know, after a couple hours working, then there's other work they might be able to be assigned.
Okay. And what happens after the pilot or, or after the project?
Yeah, um, it's, there's no defined period of time on the pilot, other than that which limits it, meaning the SEU, that funding expires June 30. If that funding expires June 30, the pilot basically expires June 30. We can still try to do it, but frankly, without our friends from PD standing behind us sometimes, you know, it's not gonna work. It's certainly not gonna work as well as it could work. The, the specialist positions are actually funded for two more years, so we still have them for a while. So, we can still attempt to work at this, you know, again, ideally, SEU gets renewed. And I will remind you, SE, that, that particular patrol is, is funded from two sources, the city and Valley Water. And so, it, and of course, this is in Valley's water interest to do, but they're gonna still need to write their side of that check to keep the program going.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm impressed about the thorough outreach that was completed to the unhoused who lived along this section of the trail. It said that unhoused were moved to interim and permanent supportive housing. As referencing the memo to that end, how many, how many people were identified to be living within this section of the trail?
Within this, the section directed, which is Wazway up to Julian, there's about 20 people in there as of today. Now, we're probably not getting to this abatement till April, so that's likely to change between now and then.
Well, when, when it first was abated, I'm saying.
Oh, the first time? Oh, I don't, do you remember? Anybody remember? I don't remember. In the original abatement from the grant?
Yeah.
It was a lot, I know that, but I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can get it for you, I'm sure.
Do we know what the percentage was that we're able, we were able to provide a housing option to?
For the first one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the process of it.
How many, how many people went into the?
Cuz in the memo, it says that we were offering to them housing solutions, interim housing, permanent supportive housing. What's the data on that, essentially is what I'm asking? What, what percentage of the, our unhoused residents were able to get those services?
My understanding from that particular $2 million grant, about 50% of the total, give or take a few percentage points, went in or accepted housing or vouchers or some other service. And about the other half, uh, did not.
Okay. No. Appreciate that. What, what's the length of time that we have funding for this pilot?
So, the SEU expires the end of this fiscal year, the specialists expire in another two years. If we wanted to keep the specialists going, we can, we can kinda move some things on the, on the table, so to speak, to get them a vehicle in the short term, but if we're gonna keep doing this for another two years, we, we would need funding for a vehicle for these two people to be up and down the trails like that all day and doing the abatement work. So, SEU and some non-personal for vehicles and signage and things like that are things that we're gonna need on an ongoing basis beyond June 30th if we wanna keep going successfully.
Are we able to access the grant again or are we gonna have to utilize our city's budget?
So, the, the city actually just applied for an encampment resolution fund grant. That, the application cycle just came back up. It's not actually for the exact same place. The, the state has a bunch of factors and criteria that it considers, including partnerships with other jurisdictions. Because it's the state, we partnered with Caltrans on a location, but that was submitted, submitted last week and we'll be looking to try to replicate. Some, replicate getting people housed from encampment locations at another location.
Replicate it, but essentially, this pilot, we're gonna lose the funding eventually from the state, right? And then we're gonna have to utilize our own funds to fund it?
I'm not sure. I don't.
Is this a continuing grant or these, these funds are gonna run out, right?
I wanna tease out the difference. You're not asking, you're asking about the pilot that, that is being approved today.
Correct.
That's, that part is actually not being funded by the state, right?
Oh, really?
That's general fund.
It's not from the ERF grant?
No, that's, that, that was expended to house folks out of the, that, that initial wave of, of people who got housed.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. Well, thank you for, for clearing that up. Is there, I hear that there's gonna be, um, other opportunities, it sounds like, from what you mentioned, to apply for dollars to do this in other areas?
Well, I guess maybe just to clarify the "this," right, it's to, to house people who are living outside in, in various encampments. So, that is an ongoing program of the state and our housing department actually just put together, but I think it's a pretty compelling application that was submitted last week to the state to, to try to replicate, working with partners at Caltrans, Valley Water, et cetera.
I appreciate that. I appreciate we're doing this. I'm happy to vote, you know, in support of, of Guadalupe River Trail and, you know, making sure that, you know, the Children's Discovery Museum is accessible to our, our families. But I just wanna be clear, we have assets throughout the city of San Jose. You know, we have assets, you know, the, the Lower Silver Creek Trail was, the master plan was completed in 2007. And then it was deprioritized and it seems like we always are talking about Guadalupe River Trail. And I just wanna stress that there are other trails in this city and there are other resources that our residents utilize. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Candelaus?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I appreciate the, the comments and the dialogue from my colleagues, specifically with the concerns around the overall system implications of, of this pilot. You know, although I think we did get some clarity on, on what those would look like in other parts of the district. You know, to, to echo the thoughts of, of Councilmember Ortiz, I, I think, you know, the Thompson Creek Trail in my district comes to mind with regards to, you know, which ironically, we just did a ribbon cutting for in the fall of last year. And I, I get plenty of concerns from my residents about, you know, the, not just the, the sheer number of encampments that are there, but, you know, the inability to actually go through the trail because of, of, of folks on the, the unhoused residents, you know, who are occupying the trail. And so, you know, I, I think it's gonna be important to see, and I look forward to seeing the metrics that are developed from this, uh, from this pilot to, to, in order for us to better understand the efficacy of these interventions that are being deployed and to see if the cost that we're paying is actually working and actually helping the, the, the overall, not just the, the cleanliness, but the, the usage and, and the implications other, and other parts of the, the city or other parts of the pilot areas that we're, we're doing, there's trade-offs. And like the, the analogy that was depicted earlier about a balloon, you know, I, I do have, I do have the concerns of, of what, what, um, what we're gonna see in other parts of the district based on our, on our focus of re-encampments. And as the District Eight Councilmember, I, I, I just have to say that. So, I, I too will be voting in favor of this, just so we can explore it and see, see the, uh, the data once we come out. And this is obviously something that has to be discussed within the budget, given the, um, the, the end of the, the funds currently appropriated. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go back to Councilwoman Davis, I had a question, you know, while Councilmember Cohen was talking about, you know, sort of squeezing the balloon. I'm wondering if, um, cuz data is really important. So, I'm just curious as to whether or not you have like a heat map that demonstrates in terms of where the high-intensity areas are? Because I think that we all have areas that we're concerned about. And so, as you collect the data, it'd be interesting to know, you know, its overall effects as to, you know, like what Councilmember Cohen said, is in terms of moving, the movement of where people go. So, I think that might be useful in the future, if you're not doing it now, to really just sort of generate what's happening in the entire city. And with, with his example of, oh, well, you know, they had like over 40 RVs and then 30 went away. You know, where did they go? I mean, if you know, if you know. I mean, maybe, because the thing is that, that, you know, moving the problem around, you know, is, is not going to be a solution. So, I think that while, um, we're, we're looking at what are some of the ways in which we can address this, having the data and information, I think, will be helpful to all of us. Okay. Um, Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I wanna thank my colleagues for this robust discussion. I'm a little bit hesitant to look a gift horse in the mouth because I think I can count to six. But I just wanna add a, a couple of other comments. First of all, I wanna clarify, I think there maybe was some confusion when I was referring to the $2 million we used from state funds, that was for an initial encampment clearing, clearance, so initial abatement. And, and I know you said, John, that about 50% of them took housing. Many of them, by the way, are still in my district. They're at Arena Hotel. But everyone was offered housing through that abatement, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, I just wanna be clear about that. The second time around, they, they're, if there's shelter available, they will be, they will be offered shelter. Is that correct?
We, we will make sure that they know that, that they can check the local shelter. We won't know if it's full or not, you know, and, and, you know, shelters are pretty far from this location. These people mostly are going to be on foot. So, whether they would take advantage of that is probably relatively low probability.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't wanna speculate on that because I think people are pretty familiar with the bus system. Omar, I just wanted to ask, can you, can you talk a little bit about shelter versus interim housing versus permanent housing, whether it's supportive or not, and how this, that might relate to this issue?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things that's really important for, I think almost everyone who's, all of the councilmembers just booked today talked about the need for places for people to go in sort of like a generic way. But yeah, to sharpen that point a little bit, there are over 4,000 people on the street. We have permanent housing and we're trying to build more and you all improved in, in NOFA that got released, so that's coming. There's five interim housing sites we're working on in addition. When we adopted, when you all adopted the implementation plan for the community plan to end homelessness, it included looking at things like safe outdoor sleeping. But I think fundamentally, right, the hard question around like what happens on Cruise Drive when you ask people to leave or what happens is, is, is reaching the point of saying, where are people gonna be allowed to be, right? Like, it takes a while to build anything, anything, regardless, even the simple ones. So, I, I think foundationally, when you get into the next phase of the conversation, you said there's no shelter. John was just saying, the last time I checked, there were multiple weeks worth of delay to get, to get into shelter. There's just a lot of shelters that just don't have space. So, so coming up with meaningful options for people so that they're not just being abated from here or abated from there, that's a hard conversation, but it's one I think probably it's ti- time to figure out.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and I understand we're not doing that today, but definitely something to discuss next week when we're talking about priority setting for the budget and, and how all of these things relate. I do wanna say, um, I, I appreciate a couple of councilmembers mentioned that they're concerned about, about when the 20 or so folks who have, have sort of re-encamped in that area or whether, whether they were of the 50% that didn't accept or whether they are other people coming from elsewhere that are currently on the trail. They, um, they're, they're most likely to, to re-encamp in the neighborhoods, most likely to re-encamp in the neighborhoods nearby. And I appreciate my colleagues for, for their concern. I'm sure Councilmember Torres does too, because they're most likely to re-encamp in our, in our districts, which is where they are now. But I do wanna say, uh, and I, and I, I also wanna recognize that I understand everybody's got pain points. I, this isn't even close to cover all of the pain points in my district or even most. This is only one, because together, Councilmember Torres and I have over 1,400 unsheltered homeless people in our district. So, according to the last point in time count, if my staff has done my notes right, which I'm sure they did. So, we're, um, we're well aware that, that this doesn't fix the issue, period. It doesn't fix the issue. We're just asking, and I think there was some, some interest there in the asking for some information. It's so costly to abate. What does it cost to prevent these abatements, really? To prevent re-encampments is really the question, I think, that we're trying to answer here. So, I, I have a couple. I just wanna wrap up. Do you need direction, John, to add all the way to Virginia? Because it looked like you already had an abatement scheduled for April to Virginia.
Yeah, we're more or less taking advantage of the situation, since we're gonna have people on there and this program going on. I feel fairly confident we can get the Waz to Julian space cleared within a decent amount of time. And so, we know that's a particularly difficult area and we think this is the time to tackle it, since we're gonna be out there.
Okay. And so, you don't need direction from us to do it? You can just do it?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then another question I had, just to, again, this is the final thing. Definitely some interest here, and it sounded like a, almost everyone mentioned a trail. It sounds like there might be interest in preventing re-encampments specifically on trails. This will give us data specifically for a certain length of trail. Do you need a, an, a direction to, to create an MBA so that we can actually get some data on per, like per mile, what a, you know, what an abatement looks like, what a prevention of re-encampment looked like, et cetera, for this, for this kind of thing, so that we have some, some information for the budget process about what that would look like if we wanted to do one mile of trail in each district or half a mile of trail in each district?
Yes, we would need that direction. Again, I would just caution, since we haven't done this before, I don't wanna jump too quickly ahead of ourselves. I wanna get some data and be able to say, hey, this is working, this isn't working, here's how we would change it, or here's what else we need, you know? All those questions are just completely unanswered for us right now.
Understood. Um, so, so I won't, I won't add that, but I will suggest and I'll look to the city manager to add to, I'm sure, her list of MBAs that she wants to do anyway, to, to say, I think the council would appreciate an MBA and I also think the council would appreciate more data rather than less. And so, abatement scheduled for April, that gives us, there's two months of data that we'd be missing out on. Just wanna put that out there. I know you have a schedule. I don't wanna mess with that. I know Olympia and Andrea are looking at me, giving me the evil eye, but, um, so I don't wanna mess with that. But if you could move it up, great, so that we have data, so we know this is how much it costs for this long. And with that, I'll just end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, one comment, just, just so you understand why it's gonna take a couple of months. It's because of the creation of this classification. Therapeutic specialists would be out of class doing this kind of work. We can't have a therapeutic specialist do this work. So, actually, the quickest way to do it is use this new classification, but that's a little bit of a transactional process. We just have to get through. That's what's the real delay. If we just had community activity specialists right now vacant, we could hire act people, be out there next week with people, but we don't have the, the classification or the positions yet. So, that's the real delay for the next couple of months.
Thank you. Um, I wanna take a moment to thank, you know, those who work on this day-to-day or even, you know, are participating in whatever form, the outreach providers, PATH and Home First. They worked diligently in the course of a year to re-house many of the people along the stretch of the river. I also really, really wanna say thank you to the Beautify San Jose staff. I really think that you are not just rock stars, but angels. And, uh, you know, dealing with the encampments over the course of, you know, the time that it takes and many other issues. It's a lot of time, a lot of energy, and, um, thank you. And thank you to the state for having provided the, the funding. We need more funding, so I'm glad to hear that, in fact, we have, uh, another re-application. So, with that, we're gonna go ahead and vote. Tony?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much and thank you for all the speakers and, and the staff. We're gonna move on to item 3.7, ratification of proclamation of local emergency.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Reardon, the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. There is no presentation. This is a, a protocol we need to follow after the activation of the Emergency Operations Center and declaration, or proclamation of emergency by the Emergency Services Director. And I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you so much. Tony, do we have any public comment on this item?
There are no cards.
Thank you. We will go to council and start with Councilmember Torres.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thank you. Uh, just like I said in the previous item, I just wanna thank our, our city workers who stepped it up during the, during the storm, which is, you know, the departments DOT, Parks and Rec, SJPD, but most importantly, our firefighters. As you could, as I think we all heard- As you could, as I think we all heard, right, they rescued some of our unhoused folks in the river along with their furry friends. So glad that those nine little puppies were rescued. So I appreciate our first responders, but also our emergency team. So thank you all for stepping up.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foley?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you and thank the various members of the EOC who called us over the weekend to notify us of what creeks were rising and what the level of water was. And I know Penitencia Creek, I had my eyes on that, even though Ross Creek was in jeopardy in Guadalupe as well. So I do appreciate you really being on top of things and also keeping us informed. And with that, I will move the ratification of the proclamation.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, do you have something else?
Yes, I totally forgot to thank Groundworks. As you can imagine, our city can't do it alone, and Groundworks took care of a lot of the emergencies and down trees and whatnot in downtown. So thank you, Groundworks.
Thank you. Yeah, I know there were a lot of down trees in different areas, so thank you to everyone who participated in it and helped clean things up. With that, I don't see any other hands, so we're going to go to a vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Jimenez absent, Mahan, and Botcham absent.
Thank you. We are now moving on to item 4.1, prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converters in San Jose. And I understand there's a short presentation?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm Lieutenant Brent McKim with SJPD, and I'm in charge of the Financial Crimes Unit, which covers fraud, theft, burglary, retail theft, and other property crimes. It's great to be here again. Today, I'm here to discuss a solution to a property crime that's been plaguing the nation over the last few years, catalytic converter theft, and an ordinance designed to reduce it. Before we get started on the specifics, I wanted to take a moment to thank Mayor Mahan and Sarah Garcia from the mayor's staff for surfacing this at council, and the support and encouragement I received from the other council members and your staffs, who provided input and enthusiastic support, and also Carl Mitchell from the city attorney's office who drafted the ordinance. Before we get to the ordinance itself, I'd like to first provide a little background about catalytic converter theft. First, what are catalytic converters? These are devices attached to the underside of cars or trucks as part of their exhaust systems. They were mandated in 1975, and they neutralize harmful greenhouse gases in engine exhaust that contribute to air pollution and smog. They're stolen for the valuable metals contained inside, including platinum, rhodium, and These precious metals have increased in value on the global market, making catalytic converters lucrative targets for thieves. Recyclers pay up to $250 for a catalytic converter from a gas vehicle and $800 for a catalytic converter from a hybrid vehicle, which is why Toyota Priuses are favored among thieves, accounting for a large portion of victims' vehicles. Speaking of victims, catalytic converters cost as much as $3,500 to replace. Catalytic converters were stolen more than 64,000 times across the country in 2022, a 288% increase over 2021, and California represented far more than our fair share, representing 37% of the overall number. We've also been hit hard here in San Jose. In 2021, SJPD logged 1,509 catalytic converter theft reports, which increased to 1,843 in 2022 and then fell to 836 in 2023. The significant drop in reports from '22 to '23 could be due to a couple of factors. State law was passed for recyclers in September 2022, which likely contributed. Or, as we've seen with other property crimes, if the perception from the victims is that nothing is being done, then they're less likely to bother filing a police report. The answer is probably a combination of both. Even so, catalytic converter theft has caused San Jose residents well over $4 million over the last three years. And that doesn't even account for the lost wages when a family is without their vehicle for days or weeks while their car's in the shop. This indiscriminate crime extends across virtually every neighborhood, impacting residents' livelihoods. In the worst cases, victims have been physically harmed or killed attempting to interrupt the crime. Catalytic converters are typically stolen from vehicles parked in driveways, on the street, or in parking lots. And because a metal saw is used for removal, the actual crime is quite loud and often occurs in plain view. As a result, many of these crimes are interrupted by the vehicle's owners or bystanders who are simply investigating the commotion. Individuals committing these thefts are often armed, and the confrontations during interrupted thefts have resulted in assaults and homicides in San Jose. Current law allows for two avenues of prosecution. Thieves caught in the act, either live or via video or some physical evidence, can be prosecuted for grand theft. Thieves not caught in the act but caught with stolen catalytic converters in their vehicles, possession of stolen property would be the applicable charge. However, current law allows the police to make an arrest in this case only if the victim can be identified. If not, then it's not prosecutable. The only way to tie the catalytic converters to victims is if the catalytic converters have unique etched numbers, which can then identify them as stolen, if the numbers had been documented in police reports when the cats were reported stolen initially. SJPD's Etch &amp; Protect Program provides residents with free etching of license plate numbers or vehicle identification numbers on their catalytic converters, aiding in the identification of stolen catalytic converters and allowing officers to cite or arrest individuals responsible for theft. However, in 2022 and 2023, only 425 residents had their bins etched into their catalytic converters through the program. On November 28, 2023, a SJPD officer stopped a stolen vehicle containing 14 stolen catalytic converters. None of the catalytic converters Hey, fellas, had etched bins. So charges were not filed on the theft, though thankfully, that suspect was charged with stolen vehicle, with the stolen vehicle and an outstanding warrant. There have also been some law changes to address this crime. A bill was passed to discourage the recyclers who purchased the stolen catalytic converters. In September 2022, the California State Legislature passed Senate Bill 1087, which imposed stricter regulations on recyclers and other licensed businesses that may reasonably generate, possess, or sell catalytic converters. The law requires recyclers to provide documentation signifying the catalytic converter being purchased by the recycler was obtained by the seller in a legal manner. However, the state passed no law requiring the same documentation for those attempting to sell the catalytic converters to the recyclers, the thieves. The City of Los Angeles decided to address this side of the equation. In October 2022, LA enacted an ordinance barring unlawful possession of an unattached catalytic converter without proof of ownership documentation. The ordinance made it a misdemeanor to be in possession of a catalytic converter without proper documentation, punishable by up to six months in jail and up to $1,000 per violation, with each stolen catalytic converter counting as a violation. Since then, the city has seen a steady decline in reported catalytic converter thefts. We are recommending the City of San Jose implement San Jose Muni Code 10.20.180, prohibition of unlawful possession of catalytic converters, a similar ordinance to the one implemented in Los Angeles. This would make it unlawful to possess a catalytic converter without documentation or other proof to verify that they are in lawful possession of the catalytic converter. Violation of this ordinance would be punishable by up to six months in jail and up to $1,000 per violation, with each stolen catalytic converter counting as a violation, essentially mirroring the Los Angeles ordinance, right? Additionally, we recommend the amendment of the Administrative Citation Schedule of Fines to add additional fines for violating the ordinance, specifically $1,000 per stolen catalytic converter for the first offense, $2,000 for the second offense, and $4,000 for the third and subsequent violations, all within a 12-month period, though we hope at this point the thief would have gotten the message. Here are some examples of what would be accepted as documentation, like a bill of sale from the original owner with photographs, documentation from an auto body shop, verifiable email from the previous owner, photographs of the vehicle from which the catalytic converter originated with the license number, vehicle registration associated with any etched license plate number or VIN. So we're really just looking for reasonable documentation, anything that can be confirmed. So overall, we believe this ordinance will deter catalytic converter thieves from committing this costly crime in San Jose and make San Jose a safer city. Thank you. I'd like to now open it up for questions.
Thank you. Tony, do we have any public comment?
There are no cards.
Thank you. We will now go to our council members. Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I just want to thank our San Jose Police Department staff for bringing forward this proposed ordinance. A special thank you to Lieutenant Brent McKim and Attorney Carl Mitchell for taking my staff's phone calls and walking them through this very important issue. Please know that for victims of these crimes, this policy represents a form of justice being served. The theft of catalytic converters, I always want to say Cadillac converters, catalytic converters is a huge indiscriminatory issue that impacts residents of any area of our city and at every socioeconomic level. A lot of us know the gut-wrenching feeling of getting into your car and turning it on, and suddenly, something doesn't sound right. And then you get off, and for some of us, we realize it's because our catalytic converter was stolen. This experience unfortunately is becoming more and more common issue for our residents. It's even affected a member of my own staff. She was helping with an event in Emma Prouse Park and came back and her catalytic converter was stolen, and the car wouldn't turn on. So I know that numerous of our constituents in our districts are impacted. And the reality of it is that it only takes seconds to get underneath a vehicle and remove this valuable device that is then resold or recycled for a fraction of the cost to replace. And the current laws only charge an individual with a crime only if it can be proven to have been stolen from a particular victim. For example, if your vehicle's VIN is etched into the catalytic converter, however, if there's no serial number, then no files can be charged. Case in point, last year, San Jose Police Department stopped a stolen vehicle containing 14 stolen catalytic converters, but since none of the converters had etched VIN numbers, no charges were filed. These were but a few among hundreds of other victims in the city whose perpetrators faced no consequences for the crimes that were passed against them. And that's why it was a pleasure to author this memo alongside Councilmember Candelas, Davis, Jimenez, and Dwan, to enact a higher schedule of fines for the possession of these converters with a shorter timeframe of violation. To that end, our end goal is to send a clear message to these thieves. If you steal from working people in our city, we will come down on you with the full force of the law. Additionally, we want to ensure that our San Jose police officers are well-trained in identifying catalytic converters, which can all be from different brands, makes, models, or vehicles. And by providing our officers with expertise, it will enable them to quickly and efficiently distinguish stolen converters from other car parts. They will be thoroughly equipped with knowledge about the diverse characteristics of these components, allowing them to make informed decisions while routine patrols or during investigations. So hopefully, this policy will provide our police department the necessary tools, education to ensure that this theft is a thing of the past in the City of San Jose. That being said, I move the Ortiz, Candelas, Davis, Jimenez, and Dwan memo.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Candelas?
Thank you. I too want to express my appreciation to Lieutenant McKim and the entire department for your work on this, and also my colleagues for their work on the memo that we provided. And, you know, we know the rampant theft of catalytic converters in our community. Folks in my district, whether you're shopping at Eastridge Mall or, you know, my residents at the villages who live in a gated community, they're also experiencing catalytic converter thefts as well. So, you know, the impacts are felt throughout our community, and it's important that we do send that message that we won't tolerate that and we give our officers that tool to be able to follow through and help deter some of the crime. Now, with regards to the training, could you elaborate a little bit on the training? I know we talked about this, and with regards to implementation, and to see how that would roll out.
You bet. So we have kind of a multi-pronged approach to the rollout and training. That's a great question. So first, we'll do a press release with the PIO and a fact sheet. I'm going to work with command staff, who are here in attendance, who attend community meetings, make sure they're up to speed on this. And from an officer training standpoint, we'll train all shifts at patrol briefings, and we'll go over things like how to identify catalytic converters, what to look for regarding stolen catalytic converters, saw marks and things like that, what constitutes proper paperwork. I described some of the things today, but I'll have some other ones there for them that they could accept as well. And then how to properly cipher the offense to make sure it goes through the process smoothly. And then, obviously, with police officers, you want to provide them a cheat sheet, right? So they've got all that. I've already met with the district attorney's office, and I'll meet with them again, because in the case where, like the stolen vehicle that was stopped with the catalytic converters, that person was charged with 10851, stolen vehicle possession, the DA would charge that, and the DA also said they would also charge the Muni Code as well. So I'll continue to work with them and make sure that they have everything they need with respect to specifics so that they can go ahead and do that. So some of this is already underway, and that's sort of the remainder of the rollout. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Now, this is definitely a community-wide effort, not just our officers but also the residents, so they know and everybody's on the same page. So I appreciate your work and your diligence on this. I think, you know, safeguarding our community by holding perpetrators responsible and accountable for their actions sends a powerful message, and it's a deterrent. And I look forward to seeing the results of this. So I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Councilmember Dwan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Enough is enough. I think our residents in San Jose are tired of having to either pay out of pocket or insurance company paying for it. It raises their insurance. I just have a couple of questions for staff. If a criminal steals a catalytic converter, has incurred the maximum penalty, let's say, with our approval, at $6,000 the maximum, if they steal another batch within 12 months, period, does the fine track back to $2,000, or is it something else?
So the way the original memo was written was it would be within 12 months. So it would be 1, 2, and 4. The proposed additional memo was to go to 4 and 6. Originally, the 1, 2, and 4 was within a 12-month period. The proposal is to expand that to a 36-month period. So for tougher, obviously, for tougher penalties. So that's how that would work. So it would track back, in the case of the additional, the newer memo, if you just found 1, then you'd be charged $2,000. Then in the next time, if you charged, if you found someone with 2, then it would be $4,000 times 2, because each one would be its own fine. So that would So that would be eight. And then if, within the 36-month period from the original crime, if you stole another one, then it would be just $6,000, right, times however many you, however many were found.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, could I add also? This is Paul Joseph, Assistant Chief. There's also criminal penalties associated with this, including jail time. So it's not just the administrative fee schedule, but, you know, incarceration.
And if I'm correct, even the first offense would be a felony. Is that correct? It's over $2,000?
No, it's a misdemeanor. For this municipal code, it's a misdemeanor.
Even over, let's say, $6,000, would that still be a misdemeanor?
Well, the $6,000 is the fine.
Okay.
Right. But it's still a misdemeanor. That's the maximum we could charge for the Muni Code. If the state comes out with a similar law, and it's over, and then it would be over $1,000 to replace, right? Because it's $1,000 to $3,500, they may be able to make it a misdemeanor or a felony, a felony at that point. But that's not something that we can do through the Muni Code. But I like the way you think.
Thank you. Senate Bill 1087 enacts a stricter regulation on core recycler. However, there is no law requiring the seller to produce this document when in possession of a catalytic converter not attached to a vehicle. The question is, is our IGR team taking any action to advocate at the state level for changes to this regulation?
I believe they're talking about it, but to this point, it hasn't been discussed. Or it hasn't been completed. And certainly, there didn't seem to be anything in the near term, which is why we wanted to move forward with this so quickly. Because we didn't see anything close enough on the horizon to solve the very issue you're talking about.
Well, thank you very much, staff, and continue the good work that you do out there and be warned to criminals that we're going to charge you, and then we're going to find you on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres.
Great, and thank you so much for that presentation. My question is going to be about prevention. Does our SJPD have a prevention program? Maybe like a decoy program to make sure that folks... Yeah, it's just like Councilmember Ortiz. It's a hard thing to say, catalytic converters. I think I just said Cadillac, but still, converters.
Well, now I'll probably start saying Cadillac converters.
Yeah.
Since I've said catalytic converters 1,000 times just in that presentation alone, it's a little easier.
Yeah.
So we don't have a formal decoy program. That doesn't mean we couldn't come up with one with maybe some of our special ops units or something like that. At this point, this law will help us implement something like that. Without the law, it wouldn't really be, you know, very fruitful to have a program like that because we would find a bunch of stolen catalytic converters that wouldn't get charged. But that is certainly something that we can look at.
Okay, yeah.
It's a great idea.
Go ahead.
Councilmember, if I could add, we did, as a means of prevention, begin our etching program where we arranged for people to go to different auto body shops and have the VIN number or their license plate number etched into the catalytic converter as a means of identifying, as a way of preventing these thefts in the first place. So we are being proactive as well.
No, okay, good. I think that's extremely important. Now, I know... I'm trying to frame this question in a way where I word it correctly. So what if somebody has a, I'm just going to say converter at this point, or if somebody has a converter that got it from, you know, a shop that got it from somebody else? They didn't steal it, but they somehow have a converter? How do we prevent some of our, you know, folks who need this converter? Because obviously, it's a crisis, this, you know, stealing of catalytic converters is a crisis. So how do we prevent innocent folks from getting these large fines when they do have a stolen one, but they didn't know it was stolen?
I had it on, sorry. Well, there is a, so there is a law that says that the person, that the shop, if you will, who accepts that catalytic converter needs to make sure they have paperwork on file, or else if we happen, if we did a search of that shop and we found that they had them without paperwork, they could be charged as well. And that's the state law, right? So there is some prevention, at least, from the state in that regard. And then if they've made a mistake, I mean, hopefully, there's enough publicity about this particular ordinance that they will know that they're going to need to have the proper paperwork. If not, the idea isn't to roll up the person who unbeknownst finds a catalytic converter that happens to have saw marks, and they don't happen to think it's stolen. I mean, they can certainly, we can work that out during the prosecution process and decide if that's really the person we're after. Or maybe they cooperate, and we leverage them to sting the person who sold it to them. So there's ways to handle that. Obviously, the goal of this program is deterrence, and then to punish thieves, not really the person who couldn't get one because they're scarce and there's a shortage because of all of the thefts, and then they happen to, you know, become a victim themselves.
Okay. And you don't need direction from us on the prevention? Are both memos from the other group and then this group?
Should be sufficient, yeah.
Okay, cool. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, just a question. I know that there's a regional auto theft task force at Radif, I think it's called. And so that focuses on, obviously, vehicle thefts, but this is a theft of a part of a vehicle. And so how do you envision this interacting with that, if at all? I mean, I know they sometimes use bait cars and things of that nature, and do you know how this would work with that?
Well, as they do their investigations on this, on vehicle thefts, as you pointed out, they will undoubtedly run across this sort of thing. In fact, that's another avenue of training for me, is to train them on this so that when they run across this, we can investigate that, and now we have a tool for them to use to prosecute this.
Okay. And then I know they, just... Do you envision that they would maybe use bait cars to try to get people to try to go in? And I'm just trying to think of how it would work, right? To go in and steal a Cadillac converter and figure out how it would work?
Well, we've done, so we have done, we have had units that have gone to the recyclers and tried to set up operations where, you know, we bring in catalytic converters that are stolen and see, you know, and try and catch them that way. So I can see that. I'm not sure I envision, maybe, you guys, as far as how Radif might leverage this further other than as they find these catalytic converters in the normal course of their business.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. I don't have any other hands, so Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now we will go to item 6.1, 2024 Power Mix and Rates. And we do have a presentation.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Lori Mitchell, the Director of the Energy Department, and very pleased today to be joined by Zach Strike, our Assistant Director, and Lena Williams, who is our Deputy Director of Account Management and Marketing. This item is to set our 2024 power mix and rates. Excuse me for one second. Okay. So as a reminder, in terms of setting our rates, we have three goals. One is to offer competitive and stable rates to use our new cost-of-service model for setting rates that we developed last year, and then to build our reserves to cover at least 180 days of operating expenses. So first, a summary of what are our costs. So you can see here in this column, our costs in 2023 were about $363 million. This year, we are projecting about $100 million increase in our costs. And the main cost driver for that is a product that we're required to buy, which is called resource adequacy, which I'll talk more about in just a moment. You can see our general and administrative costs are almost the same. And then we are recommending to increase programs funding by $6 million in this rate recommendation. It's important to note that we will bring forward how those dollars will be allocated to TNE and then to the full council as part of our program's roadmap. So a little bit about resource adequacy and why we're seeing these significant cost increases for this product. So just as a reminder, resource adequacy is a product that ensures there's enough capacity and reserves to ensure the California grid can maintain a balanced supply to meet all of the demand. So it's a capacity product to ensure there's enough resources there to meet all of the electricity demand. Unfortunately, over the last few years, there's been a shortage of this product in the market, which has led to a lot of scarcity and increased pricing. You can see the graph here showing the increased pricing that we've seen over the last couple of years. So, for example, you know, back in 2019, 2020, we bought this product for about $6. We're now buying it for $50 and $60. And so that's a huge increase in the last few years, and that's why we're seeing our power supply costs increase. So we are recommending an increase to our rates, but still staying significantly below PG&E. It's important to note that we do expect this market to continue in this way into 2025 and probably 2026. But some good news on the horizon, we have been investing in long-term renewable supplies, and as those contracts get constructed and put on the grid, we should see this issue start to settle and prices come back down. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Zach and Lena that will walk you through the rest of our recommendation.
Thank you, Zach Strike, Assistant Director in the Energy Department. So last year, we set our rates with a plan, the expected case, to finish the calendar year with $185 million in our operating reserve. And that is after repaying the loan from the General Fund. So we did finish repaying that in November of last year. Very excited to have made that milestone. And we exceeded the target a bit. We will publish the financial statements for last quarter next week, but we will be above the $185, probably about $195 million in reserves. So as Lori mentioned, costs are up, though. So whereas last year, operating expenses were about $1 million per day, in 2024, our operating expenses are more like $1.4 million per day. So we've made great progress towards the 180-day of operating expense reserve target, but we're not quite there yet. So the PCIA, one of our less favorite topics, but we very much need to factor this into our rate setting. The PCIA stands for Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. And as a reminder, our customers pay this every month. It's a per-kilowatt-hour charge. So we pay very close attention to it in our rate setting. It's set to increase, as you can see in the far-rightmost column there, going up almost three times. That amounts to approximately $23 million additional that PG&E will collect from our customers, and we need to factor this into our rate setting. The reason for it going up, energy prices have moderated a bit, and that is counterbalanced by what Lori talked about, is the very, very significant increase in the other products of RA and also renewable energy attributes. And I'm going to pass it on to Lena.
Thank you. Lena Williams, Deputy Director in the Energy Department. So I'm going to share just a little bit about what our goals were and our strategy in setting rates that we could remain competitive, of course, build the reserves, which has been previously discussed, and then future planning, which you've also seen as part of our recommendation to increase the investment into our energy programs. So we set our green source rate, so our green source products being the default, where the majority of our customers are currently participating at a rate that is still 8% less than PG&E. So even in following our current strategy and even including those increases in the PCIA, the overall savings to our San Jose Clean Energy customers is actually going to be reflecting the greatest discount they've had since we've been able to start service. So on average, customers, even after our recommended increase, they would still be saving 8.1% on average on their San Jose Clean Energy generation rates. Also, what has been mentioned is that in upcoming, in July 1 of this year, PG&E is anticipated to have a very significant rate decrease. So the way that we have designed our rates currently is so that we are actually in a position to respond accordingly, potentially even having to decrease our rates to maintain competitive with PG&E, but still meet the financial goals of the agency for this fiscal year. So at the end of the year, we should be able to, utilizing this methodology, have about $22 million in operating reserves at the close of the fiscal year. And that will also include, in this recommended structure, a $6 million to start funding energy programs. There are some programs that are already in effect, and we are requesting to increase the funding that's available to those programs in the upcoming year. So the first of which is represented here. You will see we're requesting to expand SG Cares, which is a very popular program currently, right now, where we are having currently our increase of 10% in the discount rate that we are offering to CARE and FARA customers. Last time we brought an expansion to council, it was to request that commercial customers that already had CARE FARA discounts would actually be able to participate in receiving this discount as well. And now what we're asking to do is expand that to affordable housing. So 17,926 affordable housing units in the city of San Jose have been identified. And you can see the income limit ranges that are listed there between the 30 and 80% of our Aryan median income. In these residential housing, we actually do not have all customers necessarily participating in CARE and FARA. So the goal would be to, going forward, to actually essentially hard-code having that discount assigned to the address of these affordable housing units instead of being tied to a customer's individual bill. So going forward, anyone who moved into the affordable housing units would be able to receive the benefit of this discount. So this would, with council's approval, the pilot would first start with approximately 1,000 customers who participate in the County of Santa Clara's, excuse me, homelessness prevention program, excuse me, as well. And this would also include an annual reduced revenue to the SJCE customer savings, so the $150,590K. So the pilot, excuse me, just to clarify, the pilot would be the on-bill, emergency bill assistance to our customers. And I think I may have skipped one. Sorry, right here. Excuse me. So just to clarify, the pilot program would be here, the Emergency Bill Relief Program. That bill credit of up to $1,600 for 100 residents initially. The goal would be to see just whether or not this actually helps. Customers avoid both impacts of homelessness since having issues with bill affordability seems to be one of those indicators. And that $1,600 cap would be utilized to actually wipe out any balance that customer has at that time on their account. And then they would also have a following three months of bill payments so that they could actually stabilize both in their housing and in their ability to pay their electric bills. The pilot would be essentially streamlined in coordination with San Jose Clean Energy and PG&E and with partner agencies. And as you've seen... and PG&E and with partner agencies, and as you've seen from the memo, we've already started to identify within the energy programs team, agencies that we can partner with. Since this is a new process, there aren't any other CCAs that are putting together programs working directly with community-based organizations in this way. The hope is that once we determine the effectiveness, at the end of the pilot term, we would be able to expand it further to other community-based organizations. So bringing the two staff recommendations again together is to first approve the rate recommendations that we have identified with our green source rates, the continuation of the discount for our SJCARES customers with a 10% discount applied to the green source rates, maintaining our existing power content, so that is not changing, and then set the rate for our green source for all rate schedules, excuse me, for our total green for all rate schedules to be the one cent adder for all customers, which right now, some customers have a smaller adder. Expanding SJCARES is the most important identified item there, having an opportunity to actually expand this to affordable housing. It's a really innovative energy program and will allow us to actually present discounts independent of how the utilities are establishing discounts currently, and then lastly, approving the implementation of the Emergency Bill Relief Pilot with a budget not to exceed 150,000 for the 2024 calendar year. Thank you.
And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comment first. Victor?
Hi, I'm Victor Niemeyer. I've been here before on San Jose Clean Energy. I want to say, first of all, I like what San Jose Clean Energy is doing with this. I don't like the memo. I don't like the process. The process is you get a 71-page memo barely a week before you're asked to make a consideration on it. There's lots of moving parts. It's complicated. It doesn't explain key details, like how much money is being sought. It's sort of confusing about whether we're doing cost of service, where you add up the cost to set the rates, or we're trying to track PG&E. You know, so I don't like, I don't care much for that, that you don't have much time. I think it's unfair to you. I think it's unfair to anybody who wants to participate in the process. So I don't care much for the memo because it doesn't explain a lot of things. I like the slides that we just saw much better, explain a little bit more on why we're doing this. There are key numbers that don't match what's in the memo, what's in the slides on the levels of reserves, but that's sort of minor in the noise. Bottom line is, I do support the points here. I think that a rate increase is, my understanding, it's actually just 3%, and it's only part gear because you're going to come back with a rate decrease later. So we're not talking about a massive amount of money here. So I don't have a major problem with going ahead and approving all of this. I would say, going forward, I think we ought to have another process that's more open. PG&E, when it wants to set rates, has to go through an open process where all stakeholders get to interact and ask questions, and, you know, all that happens with you with one week to look at this. That seems wrong. The other thing is the reserve policy was set for good reasons before you had cost of service, and it's piling up money that you don't really need, and I think that ought to be revisited as well. So rethink the process, rethink the reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the council. Thank you. We have Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I understand the program. Do we have any plan on supporting our elderly out there whom on SSI renting a room or in an apartment where they're only, you know, their SSI around $850, and by the time they pay the rent, they don't have a whole lot left to support themselves? And I would hope that we find a program to supplement for our elderly's.
Thanks, Councilmember. Really good point, and so as part of this recommendation, we are recommending two programs to help in that situation. One is continuing SJCARES, where customers that qualify based on their income can get an additional 10% discount from us on their bill. The other, as Lena mentioned, program that we're wanting to pilot is an Emergency Bill Relief Program, where if people are behind, say, three or four months on their electric bill, and in particular, if they're getting at risk for disconnection, this would provide a bill credit to get them caught up, help them stay caught up, and prevent that disconnection.
And is there a program out there for homeowners who are on the lower income to seal up their house in the winter, so that way they don't spend a whole lot of energy to keep warm, if you will?
Yeah, it's a very good question. So on our website, we have a lot of information on that, about how to leverage some of the state CPUC funding that assists customers with those kinds of issues to make sure that they can replace older windows, improve their insulation. It's all under a category that we call energy efficiency, and so that's something that is a great resource for customers. We also offer customers that are income-qualified discounts on their appliances, so washers, dryers, refrigerators, freezers, and so that's another great resource to those customers. And that's a program that we're administering, so the state provides that funding, and we administer it to our customers.
And would you please send that link to my office, so that way we can spread it to our residents?
Yes, we will send it to all the council offices so that you can help us get the word out.
Thank you. This I have.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I was thinking about the same thing, and obviously, listening to the comments about the programs, which I think are great. Can you remind me, maybe I missed it, but how long is that pilot going to go on with the CARES program?
So what the resolution today recommends is piloting it for a year, and what we're hoping to do is learn from that and then scale the program as part of rate setting and the budget process next year with the programs roadmap.
Okay. And then the other question I had is the 10% for the, that wasn't the CARES program, sorry. This new system, when looking at the agendas, isn't the best, but the program where the 10% discount to folks that qualify, how did you determine that 10% was inadequate sort of amount, and what are the restrictions that exist?
Yeah, that's a great question. So just as a reminder, the CARE and FARA programs are state programs where customers get a discount. So even before San Jose Clean Energy, that program has been around for decades.
PG&E uses that.
Right, PG&E uses it. So it's state funding that the investor in utilities used to administer, and that continues to date. So if you want to qualify for CARE, and we do a lot of communications, and this is where, you know, partnering with your offices would be great, if they meet those income limits, they simply submit an application and they can get that discount. What we're doing is that we're putting another 10% on top of that discount to further help those customers, because we know the cost of living is high here. In terms of how we came up with that, we thought that that's something that we could afford in the rate-setting process. We know that that doesn't go the full way. We know, you know, there's a lot of affordability issues, but, you know, that's something that we, the council approved two years ago, and we started with a 5% discount. We increased it to 10, and we're recommending continuing that, and as additional funding gets available, that might be something that we further consider is providing more of a discount there.
Okay, so it's the same state program that PG&E utilizes without our 10%? Is it 10% itself? Is that?
Oh, no, it's much more.
It's more, okay.
Lena, I want to say 25.
Yeah, so the PG&E discount is up to 20%, so that when you add ours, we're talking about the 25 to 35, depending on the customer.
Okay. All right.
And again, it's a state program that PG&E has to administer. It's not coming out of their pockets.
And we're just, but we're doing that program, we're supplementing with our own money to help sort of lift that up a little bit more. Okay. And so the other question that comes from that, that makes me, that I think about, is how do, what are the, are the internal restrictions within your office, your department strictly available reserves and money in order to, like, if we wanted, if we as a council or you decide, you know what, we actually want to fund that a little higher during these winter months where we know the, I mean, we see it in the paper every single day that rates are through the roof. I got my 83-year-old mom calling me, asking me if I could do something better. I tell her, I'm not sure I can do anything, but is there, how much space exists within your budgetary sort of framework to, assuming you wanted, you thought you could supplement that a little bit more during these peak times in which there's a lot of usage and it's expensive?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we intend by that $6 million to programs, and so what we envision is we'll go to TNE with some recommendations about how to spend that money. One of those options could be simply, you know, increasing the CARE discount. You know, there's other, we know there's a lot of other needs as well, and as well as climate needs as well, you know, around, you know, helping also customers put solar on their homes, storage, electric vehicles. So there's a lot of choices there, but I think certainly increasing the CARE discount could be a recommendation.
Okay, and that's, I think there was a slide that showed you were increasing it by 2 million. It was at 6 to 8, I think it was recommended, or?
Yeah, so right now, yeah, we received $2 million from the state for energy efficiency programs, so we're administering that. That's included in the budget now, and what we're recommending is to put in an additional $6 million into programs generally, not just to those programs, and at TNE, having a discussion with that committee on how to purpose those funds, and then coming back to the full council.
So the $6 million can theoretically get added, I mean, after discussions are had. Okay, so another question, how did you determine $6 million was that number you wanted to supplement that?
Yeah, that really came in balancing, one, trying to stay competitive. So as we mentioned, PG&E's rates did go up in January, and one thing we didn't mention is that the whole month of January, you know, they got an even bigger discount from us, 15%, because we're not changing rates until after this item is approved. So right now, our customers are getting a very, a large discount, just because we've kept our rates the same. After that, you know, they'll get the 8% that we mentioned. We think it's important, though, to collect that revenue so that we have room to drop down, when PG&E is expected to drop down this summer, so that we can still set rates below them, and so that's what goes into our thinking, is, you know, trying to cover our costs, which are up 100 million. That's number one. Number two, setting rates to make sure that we're still competitive with PG&E, and we did debate this quite a bit, you know, one option would have been to just keep rates the way they are with winter bills. The downside to that, and why we're not recommending it, is that we might find ourselves in June and July more expensive, and we know summer bills are also high, and so we want to make sure we still have that competitive advantage while also making sure that we're covering our costs and we're meeting those reserve targets.
But just to follow onto that, so, you know, why the number 6 million for programs? We think that's about the maximum that we could actually do from more or less a standing start to sort of get 6 million, you know, to customers, you know, that sort of incentive in a thoughtful, you know, responsible way. That could grow in the future as we have more apparatus in place.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's fair. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Dwan.
I move for approval of the resolution.
I don't see any other hands. I just want to thank the Clean Energy staff for always being available. I know the information is complicated, and there's a lot of it, but you've always been available, and I've taken advantage of your briefings, and they're very, very helpful. So if you haven't had a chance to reach out to the staff, they're really very helpful, so thank you so much for that. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank staff first for bringing this forward, for the details and the work you do and what you've done over the years to grow this program, make sure we have the energy to deliver to our residents, make sure that, you know, that we have the reserves. I mean, it looks like it's been well-managed, for sure, and so I want to thank you for that. Also, just sort of suggest that, for me, it's really important that we keep our rates at some significant discount to PG&E, because as we're doing this, there's, part of the idea is that this is not just good for the environment, but it's good for the pocketbook of our residents, and as I get more and more questions about, what are you doing about PG&E charging us too much? I say, well, we can't control their distribution costs, but at least, you know, you should make sure that you're receiving your energy from San Jose Clean Energy, which will be at a discount to PG&E's rates. So I just want to appreciate that work and encourage us to continue to make sure that we keep our rates as low as possible, that we're doing the right trade-off between growing our reserves, investing in the clean energy investments that we have to make going forward, and I'm very excited, we're going to start discussing that this spring, but also seeing how the rates can be, we can use them to offset rates so that our residents are getting as much of a savings as possible. So thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, just really quick, obviously, the rates PG&E going up, can you remind me how many folks in the city of San Jose residents actually are part, or have opted, or have stayed in San Jose Clean Energy? I know you need to opt out, but?
Yeah, we're really proud of that. Only 3% of residents have opted out, so that is one of the highest participation rates of an ACCA in California, so very proud of that participation rate.
And so my question is just, given the situation with PG&E, I wonder if there's, if you guys are doing any marketing as it relates to trying to bring that 3% in, and, you know, I think that'd be helpful to the bottom line, obviously, so.
So yes, that is definitely on our list of action items for this year. We are taking advantage of this period of time where our rates are significantly lower to remind those customers that are eligible to return to service with us how they could benefit right now. We've actually started to identify, in fact, who those customers are so that we can begin that right away.
Yeah, just one thing to keep in mind, and we do a lot of messaging to help customers understand this before they opt out, but per state law, if they opt out, they can't come back to us for a year. So that's another thing that the council offices can help us with in terms of messaging to customers that, you know, particularly when we see CARE customers opt out, that's concerning to us because they are getting that additional 10% discount, but sometimes despite all of the explanation that goes on, we do see those customers opt out anyway.
Councilmember Foley.
Wanting to have the last word. Thank you for the presentation and the ability to keep our rates below PG&E's. I think that's really important. We do get questions every day since PG&E announced their huge increase as to, what are we going to do? Let's start our own power company, et cetera, et cetera. So anything you can do to help create like a toolkit that we could distribute to our communities, educating them on, even though they are a member of San Jose Clean Energy, they may not realize what the benefit is that they are deriving from it. So if you have something that you can give to us, a Q&amp;A, frequently asked questions, things like that, especially with the lower rate, that we'll be able to send that out and distribute it to our community would really be helpful, I think.
That is an excellent recommendation. We actually have something that should be out to everyone on the council by tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Thank you. And with that, Tony Lizpho.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now we will move to item 8.1, Agreements with Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority and State of California for an interim shelter housing community located at the Saroni property and approve the Saroni Cherry Avenue and Villa del Oro interim shelter housing communities currently in development as committed additions to the General Fund.
So we don't, good, what is this, afternoon, evening, council? Omar Passan's Deputy City Manager, I'm joined with Jim Shannon, our Budget Office Director, and John Cisarelli, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. We've got some backup in the audience as well, but in any case, we don't have a formal presentation today. This is just, I wanted to offer a couple of context-setting remarks. Many of you on this council frankly fought really hard for interim housing in your own communities, and also really pushed to try to add the site, that we're fortunate with the partnership of the VTA to be in the process of getting closer to a reality. And so the council member before you today is really just, it's member before you today is really just it's that next important step that is getting the authority to finalize the lease. We've got a few last things to to handle. VTA's CEO Greg Richardson and others have been really good to work with. So we're pushing through to get that done and trying to really stay on on course with what the VTA board had had called for when it approved the use of the site. There's also some items in the memo related to the sort of process of of adding some committed additions to the budget to help get a better some some more budget certainty. And I don't know, Jim, if there's anything that you want to add at the moment or just we're just available for questions. So thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll go to public comment.
I have no cards.
Thank you. We will go to councilmember Cohen.
Oh, I didn't expect to come over here that quickly. Well, I just want to thank you for the work you've done on getting us to this point with Saroni, working on working with VTA on the contract. And just ask a question about the progress and what happens from here. So is today when we approve this contract, is that then going to VTA board later? Or has it been? What's the timeline for VTA to approve it as well?
So I'll need to council overall, I'll need to double check with Greg Richardson, but I believe they already have the authority. And so we're sort of off to the next step of, you know, getting the design process moved along, et cetera.
So that was my next question. When you say next step, I assume some of the design work and other things have been happening already. It's not you haven't been waiting to this point. Is that correct?
It's true that we have not been waiting. There's a there are some environmental pieces that have to be sort of sorted out. So our planning department is sort of Johnny on the spot and is providing us a in the process of providing that analysis, which they already started even pending the the lease.
And can you describe the partnership with the state on this? I mean, I know the state was saying they were going to provide and pay for. But I just want to understand better what what's going to be happening after this in terms of state's involvement and our involvement.
Yeah, so the the state is it has agreed, like it hasn't signed a thing saying it's agreed, but but the director of their state general services, the chief real estate officers, you know, they're they and the governor's office have said essentially, we are committed to helping make this bring this program online. And so we are willing to commit a certain amount of funding. It's in the neighborhood of twelve point seven million dollars towards the the project. And so we have just been the step in that process is just we're just asking them to send the check. I mean, really, at this point, we're just saying, okay, great, let's let's move that that part of the process forward.
So really, you know, there had been talk about they were doing engineering work, they were doing some of the design. At this point, we are just they're paying us money that we will use in our process.
That's correct. So the bottom line is the state had initially back in March described one level of involvement. As you sort of just alluded to, they would pay for it, basically pay for it all, hand us a turnkey project that we would be able to just operate. In December-ish, they came back and revised to what we're now looking at in terms of the state's participation. And so we are trying to just keep on forward with good partnership and figure out how to to do what we can to find alternatives to help support the project, you know, engaging with the county around potential grant sources that might be out there to help supplement services for folks in need, that kind of thing.
Is there an effect on our timeline due to this sort of shift in what responsibility from the state?
That's a hard question to answer at the moment. I would say there's been a well, it's actually an easy question to answer as to the last, I don't know, eight weeks since we found out. It required us to do some additional work and figure out like, okay, what what can we do here? And and, you know, that part of it. So so there's probably been a little bit of a of a delay from from just sort of regrouping internally. But as we look moving forward, I think we've sort of got a lane and are moving on that. And so we just have to balance that with the four other projects that this council has approved and the other priorities that come up that the council council is looking for and those kinds of things. So I think our teams have got their eye on the eye on the prize, I guess, in moving forward. So I think we're there was a little bit of a delay to figure it out, but I think we're we're moving moving on now.
Okay, and and I'll ask the million dollar question or the twelve point seven million dollar question or whatever it ends up being. The this obviously this item also includes other sites, but I'm just going to focus on the Saroni one right now. Do we have an estimated length of time we think this takes from this point forward to get to a point at which we would begin to house people there?
So I'd say I'm not in a position today because our this is not the Public Works item that describes the design and the construction process. This is just the sort of rote budget process. I understand the importance of getting more certainty. I would say we'll have a better sense within the next couple of weeks. We just have some 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 key hurdles around local standards and whether we use HCD state standards or our own local. We've got some hurdles that the Public Works team has to sort out. And frankly, over the last several days, they just have been super duper busy because of the emergency. And so we just want to get through this and then then focus on that.
And there will always be other reasons, other distractions, obviously. So we have to build that into our thinking about when we're going to what we can get done. I guess my follow-up question would then be, do we have a timeline for when we will have a timeline? So I mean, when when should we be able to expect to have a sort of a schedule that we can really think is somewhat robust?
Yeah, so I would say this, you know, the the question around the standards that'll be used for approval is something that the teams are working through this month. And so I expect by early next month, we'll be in a position to sort of say, okay, here's when we think these milestones may happen. I realize that that's pretty vague, but but because it's hard to say right now how much time it will take to to really make sure they get all those answer what we can do in terms of the local standards versus HCD. I just don't want to pull it in any sooner than that.
Councilmember, though, if I could, from a higher level budget planning perspective, we will have some estimates as part of the five-year forecast that'll be released at the end of this month, just to kind of give us some budget planning. So it won't be at the detailed level of where all the schedule hits, but approximately the year of when these costs hits and like how it all gets folded in. And not just the year, but, you know, the quarters and things. Those will be part of our forecast.
Okay, I'm not going to make a motion at this point because I know there's a lot more to this conversation coming. And I will likely be asking further questions based on the motion later. But thank you. I'll stop for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to begin my comments by thanking the numerous departments and of course, my council colleagues on the VTA board that have come together to ensure that the state initiative makes it past the finish line. Likewise, I want to recognize the thoughtful partnership with the Valley Transit Authority, who've demonstrated their commitment to the city of San Jose and of course, their workers. And finally, I echo my thanks to councilmember David Cohen, my neighbor to the north, for graciously taking in the site into his district and for working tirelessly to see it through. The material conditions our unhoused residents are living under are unacceptable. And as a council, it's important that we prioritize the development of these EIHs, emergency interim housing sites, like the Saroni site, to provide safe and healthy places for them to live. I mentioned during my comments during last week's comments that it's possible to work congruently without pitting vulnerable communities against each other. And this item demonstrates how we're able to achieve this as a city. That being said, I just had a quick question or two quick questions. As we look forward to the budget season, how many other EIH sites are in the pipeline?
Councilmember, I think of the question. So these three sites that we're adding here as committed additions, I believe would constitute the remaining balance of the projects that are in the pipeline. So the other ones, so the ones we did, so the roof for our expansion and the Bariessa Supportive Parking, we did those committed additions in December. And so the other ones were previous. We did a few others throughout the course of the last couple of couple of of years. So I think this is the balance of the things that council has given us previous direction to work on.
Okay, no, great. Have we done any study of or, you know, research on looking at the budget? How many EA EIH sites we could stand up without potentially having to make tough decisions on the delivery of essential services?
I think well, that's what that's a good question. And that's part of what this process helps us with. So having sort of these be as part of our five-year forecast and as part of the base budget process allows us to see these services in conjunction with all of the other ones. You know, we had talked about that. It looks like, you know, we do have shortfalls anticipated preliminary at least in the out years of the forecast. And so these are one of the elements that's driving that amongst several others. We have other capital sites that are coming online that are going to have some cost pressures. And so this gives the council sort of a clear opportunity to sort of see that in context of the whole general fund budget to be able to make those adjustments. Because what's what we're asking here tonight is not the final call by any means. We're still going to come forward with construction costs. We have the operating contracts. And in any given year, there may be a need to adjust the service levels of all of the city services depending on sort of what's going on with the budgetary pressures. So certainly, I think, you know, this is this is a substantial level of service the city had never provided before the pandemic. And so it's it's a new line of business that is certainly costly. And there will have to be, you know, trade-offs that will have to be made down the line, especially if if things do look worse. But but yeah, it puts it on the level playing field as all of the city services.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for that answer. And that what you're saying right now in regards to this being services that the city hasn't necessarily provided in the past and it being costly, that's part of why I supported Prop one early in the in the discussion. Okay, well, I mean, I support this and I'll I'll support the next one. But I just want to make sure that as, you know, city staff, we are looking at, you know, managing what our commitment is realistically able to be, right? Because we need to share this cost with the county and other cities need to be building their own solutions as well. And I don't want to get we all, you know, we love our parks, we love our community centers, our libraries. I don't I don't want to rob Peter to PayPal or, you know, whatever they they say, you know, close down community centers and, you know, other vital services. So I just want us to be innovative with how we approach this. Thank you.
And councilmember Ortiz, on that point, just so that you're aware and your colleagues, the county has actually been really engaged over the last, well, for an extended period of time, but certainly the last several months, as council has made several directions to try to part to instruct us to to go and partner with the county and find ways to align our systems so that the resources that can flow from the county are also available. So that's the thing that we've been we've been engaging them on. So I we hear you loud and clear on the need for other sources of funding, for other partnership, the managed care plans as another source through the CalAim have also stepped forward with some some like real specific interest right now. So I think that you're right. We've got to be as as sort of eager as possible to find partners and solutions.
Yeah, because I don't know if Cupertino has this in their priorities or Palo Alto or, you know, Montessorino, are they building EIHs? I don't know. Something tells me I don't think so. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this is this is it's important that we take care of our most vulnerable populations. But it's also important that our colleagues in other cities step up and pay their fair share, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you for all the work. Appreciate it. And I also want to thank councilmember Foley and councilmember Cohen. I know the Saroni sites, obviously, in D four Cherry Avenue sites in D nine. And I got to tell you, District Two, South San Jose, was the one that originally got these when they were kicked it off. And, you know, we've come a long way, obviously, but one of the perennial questions or comments that I've gotten from my residents time and time again is what are not not only what are the other cities doing? So I appreciate councilmember Ortiz mentioning that because but we have no control over that. What they would often ask me is what are our other districts doing, right? And so I think today, for anyone that's listening, I think it speaks to the fact that I think councilmembers here on this dais have heard that call and have stepped up. And I really appreciate that. So thank you to to councilmember Cohen and Foley for that. There's another there's obviously the third site on this memo. It's Villa del Oro. And it's technically District Ten, but it's right on the border of District Two, and it used to be District Two. And so very familiar with that site. And I'll be honest with you, I was a little reluctant to to vote on it when it came before us some time back, simply because I think we're oversaturated with these types of projects in South San Jose generally, not just in District Two. But but the reason I supported it some time back, as my staff reminded me, was because of the focus as it relates to the folks that we would do outreach to would be focused to some of the folks in the surrounding area, such as the Great Oaks area. And that was one of the reasons I was supportive of it. And touching on that, I think many of you actually commented just during the course of the day that it seems like there's we have very active folks in District Two in South San Jose sending a lot of lot of emails about some of the concerns that they have related to the the Great Oaks site. And I think if I had, I was thinking about this to share with you all. But if I think if I had sort of filter and their their concern, it is simply this, is that I think they appreciated the fact that we lifted up that the focus area for outreach related to Villa del Oro would be the Great Oaks site, right? So I think if you recall, there was a unhoused individual here that I asked her directly, if you were offered services to go there, would you take it? I think she said yes. But my point is just simply that the concerns my residents have, and I think I suspect District Ten residents have, is that because we don't have a timeframe as to when Villa del Oro is going to open, they're concerned that those encampments that are nearby are going to be there upwards of a year or more until that opens up. And so I'll just ask you the question, although I don't know the answer. So when will we get a better sense as to when that's going to open? Is it March, March 12? Or the timeline, I should say?
Yeah, so you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Villa del Oro specifically.
Right.
The opening.
Yeah, so on on Villa del Oro, to handle that question first, the the sort of external philanthropic partner has had some a little bit of challenges in terms of the materials that our Public Works team needs to evaluate. And so we don't have, as we sit here today, the the sort of timing of the the sort of downstream opening. But I think what's going to happen when we come back on March 12 with the actual agreements and moving that piece forward, that we'll have a more dialed-in notion. So we're really pushing as part of a team with them to get to what Public Works needs to be able to answer that question.
Okay, do you can you remind me what the original estimation was for the opening of that? Because I think there were some rant some dates thrown out.
Yeah, you know, there was a range of dates based on, well, I'll just I'll just say that the notion of it of it potentially taking something on the order of six months or that kind of thing, I those kinds of conversations that when when the external partner was describing what was possible early, I think that was before they sort of dug into the the details a little bit. And now that the teams have done that, I think the the realities of what it takes to do a project when we're not in the pandemic where almost every rule has been been, you know, waived.
Right. So I suspect if we were originally maybe mid next this year, that obviously there's now delays that we're thinking maybe fall of this year, sort of putting it out.
Yeah, councilmember Jimenez, I really wouldn't want to speculate.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, okay, good. So so the Branham Lane East or the Branham and Monterey project, that one, we actually have anyone that's driven by there, you see the structures up and the things are happening, it's moving. Do you have a sense as to when that's going to be open?
I'm actually going to ask, I think I think we've got Reagan.
And I'm not trying to get an exact date, and that's what we're going to report out to the community. But I'm just trying to get a sense. Effectively, I'm trying to figure out, and I think the interest of the community is what's going to open first, Villa del Oro or Branham?
Yeah, I would say at this point, the I think the tentative is is July, right? Approximately the Monterey Branham site?
Monterey Branham site, maybe July. Okay.
And so.
Yeah, so I think that and I just lift that up because I think that's part of the concern is that they're thinking these are both effectively in South San Jose District Two. And even though the memo that I'm going to move touches on Villa del Oro, they're thinking if that's going to be delayed, why don't we attach that that sort of required outreach to this particular area where there's heavy encampments to the other location, right?
Yeah, and I think I'd like to ask somebody from our housing department to come down as it relates to that outreach question. I think it'll just be useful context.
Yeah, please.
For the Monterey Branham specifically, which obviously is going to going to open sooner.
Yeah, we've talked about, you know, as you come down, Reagan, but we've talked about sort of focused outreach there. And I think that was the commitment some time back. But if you can maybe remind me what what how you're approaching it, Reagan?
Hi, Reagan Henninger with the Housing Department. So anytime we open an interim housing location, we have a geographic preference. We try and be as flexible as possible with that geographic preference to do outreach in a defined area and invite people who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness to participate in the interim housing program. We work with the Community Advisory Committee for that interim housing location and the council office to define council office to define what that geographic preference area should be. In some interim housing sites, it's been pretty narrowly defined based on the recommendation from both CAC and the council office. In other locations, the geographic preference has been all of a council district, for example. So we try and really be as flexible as we can to work with that CAC. For Monterey and Branham specifically, we have not started the geographic preference or the outreach. And we plan to work with the council office and the CAC to define what that area should be.
Okay, all right, and that council office would be the opposite. Okay, and I know we're obviously very tight, we're tied at the hip with the CAC and doing all that work, so I appreciate. I think the, when we talk about the Villa del Oro site, which again, District 10, but it's right on the border of District two, it's, I just see it as the same, you know, one of the same District two. The way we talked about that, at least my recollection, was effectively folks that are camping near that location, right? I'm just thinking, just hear me out, camping near that location. Joe Schmo, just making this up, is offered a spot at that location, which I think, you know, is great. If he refuses, then we abate. And I think that's, that's a, to me, a, a very, some folks may see it as unfair. I think that's a very logical and just approach, like we have someone for you, somewhere for you to go, right? And so what I'm wondering is, and Omar, if you want to say something, because that was my recollection as to how we were thinking about how that would work.
So we, we have a council approved policy as it relates to encampment management. I guess I just asked John if you wouldn't mind chiming in about that process a little bit.
Yeah, the, the direction in front of us isn't, isn't that specific. So I think it would be good to clarify that is the true intent of the council. That was one of my questions because it seems to infer it, but it doesn't really say it. So what happens when John says, no, I'm not going to leave? Do we first abate him and then also create a no reencampment zone where John was, right? Which is what the direction of this blue memo is to do if we're abating people. So those kind of pieces aren't clear to me, like how that would work. Even in the narrative, I couldn't really kind of peel it out.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I mean, in the memo, right? In the blue memo that I'm going to move, it touches on the no return zone within 1.5 miles of, it says, of the site, which I, it's, it's specific to Villa del Oro. But what I'm wondering, I guess what I'm wondering out, thinking out loud, because I would want to see it work that way. I think that's a fair approach. We have somewhere for you to go very clearly. If you don't go, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to abate. But what I'm wondering is, can we take that same approach, assuming we as a council, we cleared up that direction? Can we take that approach with Bram and Branham and Monterey and say, we're going to go to the Great Oaks encampment as an example and say, this one's open first, which is not too far from where they are, this one's open, you can go there. And if Joe Schmo says, I don't want to go there, then we, we clear you out.
So I, I guess I'd start by saying, so that's a, it's a pretty substantial sea change to the, to the current encampment policy for the council to, to sort of go with, at one location and say, hey, we're, we're going to, to create a sort of, almost punitive approach to somebody not accepting shelter. And, and I, and so doing that in a, in a vacuum at one site, we've got a whole city to think about and the impacts on individual people and on resourcing. I just think that's the type of thing that, that may warrant a, a, a larger, more full discussion during the budget process, that kind of thing.
All right, okay, yeah, and I understand that. Obviously, it has implicated broad implications, monetary implications that, that flow in different ways. So I'll stop asking questions and stop talking. What I'll do is I'll move the, the memo that's signed by Mayor Mahan, myself, Councilmember Foley and Councilmember Batara. Obviously, Mayor Mahan isn't here, Councilmember Batara aren't here. They were sort of the, the, the real cooks in the kitchen, if you will, as it relates to this memo. But I'll move the memo and if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Yeah, I think maybe, and I'll see if, if John or Reagan has others, but just for, for, there's a couple of points of really important clarification here. So one is the original memo from like October 17th, I think it was, the, the result of that was to, to examine or to explore no encampment zone around the Villa del Oro site. This memo is, is written in a different kind of way and it asks for things that frankly, for us to not lose time and not have to push even further out past March 12th. I, I don't think it's, we're in a position to ask staff to, to really dig in on all the different like potential no encampment zones that might need to be created associated with this or even, so I, so I would just say that we can limit it to, to the notion of the exploring a no encampment zone around the Villa del Oro site, which was, I think, the prior direction. I think that's probably something that can be done. John, is that, is that okay for you?
In, in terms of the timing? Yeah, I'm trying, I am, I'm sorry, Omar, I didn't hear if you said when that would be. I was trying to think myself, the 12th is, is too soon. It is more complicated than it might appear to figure out. I don't know if an MBA is too late in the game, if you're trying to get into the budget process.
But I guess to Omar's point is some of this work based on prior direction is being done. And so I guess I, I beg sort of the begs of question, when, when does that do to come back?
So currently, we have funding to service the areas around EIHs. And we do that, right now, we're doing it on an overtime basis, but that is primarily focused on blight, right? Dumping graffiti, those kind of things. It's not focused on abatement. So that this, to that, to Omar's point, this is new to do it this way. It's trying to build off of the program we were just talking about earlier today and say, well, let's take that and start doing that in other places. But again, I just want to caution all of you, we haven't actually done that program yet and we don't know exactly how it will sort itself out. We don't know what the pitfalls might be. We don't know it will work or won't work. It would be great to have more time to sort of prove the model before we start putting it in other places in the city. But if there's an urgency, we'd be flying a little blind and kind of guessing frankly at what might happen. And I'll just give you an example. Say there's five encampments in this area. And we go to them and three, three of them say, sure, we'll go into the IH and two of them say, no. So we have to abate the two and then post those sites and say, nobody can be here and camp here. And then post the other three where the people left and say, nobody can go there either. So you two can't go over there. But those two are going to go somewhere else. And the question is, if they stay within that radius that we've determined, do we just abate them again and abate them again until they get outside the zone? Or if we abate them once, we just leave them until they get another offer and refuse it, kind of a thing, you see what I mean? So it's, it gets tricky because what I see is over time, you just get these little pockets of no encampment zones here, there. Every place we abate somebody in that zone becomes its own little pocket of a no encampment zone, but there isn't a continuity. The advantage frankly to what we're proposing along the Guadalupe is that it's a very defined area. We know exactly what area we were responsible for and it's pretty linear and not that huge. That feels achievable. This is a little more amorphous. It's, it's not clear and you're, and, and I think it's written that way in some ways on purpose to allow us some flexibility to do more analysis, which is fine.
Right.
But in a very short period of time, by the 12th, I, I don't think we could do it.
Yeah, would, would you view it differently if the, if there was no 1.5, 1.5 mile radius and instead it said within two blocks of the site or three blocks of the site?
I would, because that would be more defined. 1.5 miles is, is a pretty large space to try to defend.
And I didn't put that number in, but yes. So what I would say then, just based on what you said Omar, then it seems like, based on the memo written by Councilmember, Mayor Mahan and Councilmember Batara dated October, October 13th, 2023, it seems like some of this direction that's in this current blue memo was given in there as your interpretation, right? And so when would that work or stuff be coming forward?
Yeah, so I think that's the one where we're going to have to, to huddle to make sure that it's, it comes back when we, the, the goal is to come back pursuant to that prior direction when we come back with the, the agreements.
But is, but, okay, so, so coming back with the agreements, March 12th, is that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think.
I guess what I, what I would like to see to the extent possible is if, if the, the work around this topic, whether it was originally in the other memo or it's in this memo, that it happens before budget season, right? So we can actually make some informed decisions as to what we want or don't want to see. And so I don't know how that, if that's possible based on.
Could we get it to you before you make a decision in June? Yes, I think so. But that's probably pretty too late in the game, right? For, for the budget process. So the question, I might ask Jim to weigh in on this as he knows the process so well, where, where a insert point might be along that way that isn't, you know, obviously I'm saying that March 12th doesn't feel very doable. So Jim, I don't know if you have a suggestion?
Yeah, let's, well, I think Omar's suggestion is good, so let's, let's huddle to figure that out. Because I think to the extent that we're looking for ongoing services, we would like to have that conversation, you're right, prior to your deliberating on the March budget message or you have that in, in information. We can always come forward with later as part of a manager's budget agenda, but then it just gets a little bit harder to fit everything in. So I think what we can do is figure out what levels of certainty we can get for costs, at least give folks an idea of sort of where, where things are so that you feel that you have at least some relatively informed numbers to guide your process when you meet in March. I think maybe, based on what John says, I think maybe the accuracy is probably going to be not the best, but I think it will probably give a level of magnitude.
Okay, so, so what if the, the, the blue memo that I'm going to move, the, the recommendation is accept staff recommendation with the following additions? And what if it just, we, we took out A and B and we simply said, when the construction and project delivery agreements for Villa del Oro are considered by the council for approval, bring back a, an analysis or summary of the pre, previously assigned work, if you will, from the October 13th memo, is that?
I think that the, the items we've already been, been tasked with, not the new material. Right.
Right, right. Because I think there may be debate as to whether 1.5 miles is the appropriate radius anyway. And, and I, yeah.
The memo allows for flexibility. It, it, it does say, it, it doesn't marry staff to, to the 1.5. It says within 1.5 miles of the site or other appropriate distance after staff analysis. So we do have that flexibility.
Okay.
Just for, just for clarification, that was on the previous memo, not on this.
That one's on this one. That's this one. The language you just read is on this one. It's on.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
So, so how about this then? Just because it seems to me that that, that flexibility, flexibility has been out, built, built out in here or included in this. Certainly want to hear from other colleagues, but I'll go ahead and just move this memo, recognizing that October 13th last year, we gave similar direction and some of that's coming forward. And this is just, you know, some of this, to me, the way I read this, and I didn't write this exactly, you know, the way it is, but it seems exploratory. Go out and do this and consider this and look at this or this. To the extent you all think that there is flexibility built in there, knowing and then hearing this conversation, that you can go forward and do some of that work?
Yeah, so I understand you're going to move the motion. I just, because of the language that's here and I know what happens once we get out of the space and it's like, oh, everybody's just going back. I want to be clear, the notion of this, this first line, direct staff to include recommendations to preserve our progress, that's the point that John was just made and we had earlier that, hey, look, we haven't even done this once yet. So asking for recommendations to do it again, it really puts us in, in a bit of a bind, right? So, so that's what I mean by just being clear. The, the old authority that was there to explore no encampment zone around Villa del Oro was something that was made several months ago. It makes sense to be able to come back. But I think some of these, that's an example of something that is, is a lot to ask at this stage.
What if we changed it to direct staff to explore recommendations?
They already have that to explore.
Yeah, I mean, okay, I, I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is effectively trying to preserve this as much as possible because I, I didn't write this, right? I signed onto the memo.
So can we hear from Councilwoman Foley because she was on it too?
So those will be all my questions and all?
Yeah, we're at the.
Thank you. So I won't make a motion. I'll leave it.
So, so we don't have a motion yet. First of all, thank you for the presentation and thank you for the focus on continuing these, to build these EIHs, although we're still only talking about in theory building them. We haven't built the three yet. But I really want to thank you Omar for meeting with us and briefing us regularly on the status of Cherry in particular and to keep Cherry or included in a committed addition to our budget. In, in District nine, we've been working really hard with our community in that area to, to maintain support of the emergency interim housing, but they grow tired of the time that is taking. And we've talked about the delay. So I'm, I'm just curious, is, do we have to complete one of these and then move to the next one? Or can we complete them all? Can we work on them all at the same time? And I know that I can't commit you to a timeframe and I'd love to hear, oh yeah, we're going to have break ground on Cherry in 30 days. I know that's not going to happen, but is there anything as far as timeline you can tell us? Or can we work on these together instead of one at a time?
So the, the answer to the, to the parallel question, can we work on these in parallel? Yes, absolutely. And in fact, our Public Works team, together with Jim Moore Paul and the City Managers Office are currently driving all five of these on, on, on various sort of trajectories. It looks like Frogger though, right? They're all going and sort of simultaneously down. It's just, you know, depending on what's happening, one might go a little bit further along and then there's a, you know, hold for environmental review, that kind of thing. So that's, that is, is happening and is doable. I think we're a little premature for a timeline on Cherry. The state, for example, changed its mind on another issue where it no longer is allowing exceptions through the HCD approval process. So that creates some challenges that weren't even in existence a year ago. So, so that these situations are fluid, but I can tell you, because I was just, you know, having this same conversation with our, our Emergency Housing Execution Team and just saying, look, how quickly can we do this? When can we move? So they're aware and pushing. They're exhausted because they were pretty busy over the last four days, like many of you were. But yeah, so, so no, I think we can and will continue to work on all of them in parallel, for sure.
Well, we know, thank you. And, and we know that the EIHs are an important solution, interim solution to getting the unhoused off, out of our creeks and off our streets. It's not the permanent solution, but it is a transitional solution that we're working towards. Of course, in the budget process, it's an expensive solution that we need to find a way to provide the EIHs and then the services that will make them successful. So I really appreciate that. I'm, I'm grappling with the memo as well. And neither of the two authors of the memo, Councilmember Batara or Mayor Mahan are here, unfortunately. And we were part of the negotiations, but we weren't the drivers on it. And Villa del Oro is in, in my district, so I'm struggling with how to make this better or acceptable. It seems to me that the memo we passed in October already gives you the direction to explore kind of this boundary around it. But there's an impact if we agree that with this, every other EH will have the same sort of desire to have a, a boundary around it. So I don't know, I'm kind of grappling with this too, Councilmember Jimenez. So with that, I, I'm just going to leave it at that and listen, listen to the discussion unless we can just merely say, move the, the one memo, the joint memo. And in the last line of paragraph one, staff recommended should, should explore and then those two items? Or is that just being redundant to what we're already doing? Thoughts?
They're conferring. Is it redundant to say explore in the second memo?
Well, I think the, the, the explore in the original, you know, memo or the, it's actually in the minutes. But, but, but in any case, I think that, that does the work. I think here, if we can potentially get until April, there are some additional items that, that may be possible to have. It's not redundant because this exploration is about this preserve our progress, no return zone kind of narrative. And that's the one that John was alluding to earlier, we haven't even done yet. So exploring that makes sense. The other explore, as it were, is about a, a, no encampment zone in a, in a certain area, which I think is, is different, right? And remember that the one that you approved earlier included a bike patrol that was dedicated to that area. And that's another thing that doesn't exist in this other location. So it's a lot of work for, for the team to, to figure out. But, but I think if you soften it to explore, that, that opportunity can work.
So, so the portion of this that is giving you heartburn, John, is direct staff to include recommendations to preserve our progress within the areas prioritized. Is that right? Because there's no progress to. Because there's no progress to preserve, because we don't have any progress yet.
That's right, yeah. It's, it's just an untested program. And so now, now you're saying, well, we're, give us an estimate to do this program along Guadalupe, and before you've even done it, you're saying, now build on that and do this other program at a different scale. So I'm estimating based on a guess.
I'm with you too.
So it sounds a little bit premature.
Yeah, okay. I, I hate to wordsmith like some, like this on the dais, so I'm just going to leave the conversation for now, see where it goes. Thank you.
Councilmember Cohen.
All right, thank you. Well, the conversation didn't quite go where I thought it was going to go, so, but I have a few just comments and questions. And I understand that these memos that come from council offices, when EIHs are being proposed, come out of a sense of frustration of our community, residents who live in areas, and of us, who are, who are responding to concerns of people who are, want us to deal with things. And so I, I fully appreciate why, and we were having these conversations. What I was kind of, the question I was going to ask is, you know, are we going to have this conversation every time we have an EIH? And are we going to take a vote on every single one of these to create a preserve progress boundary around every single site? And do we have to take council action to do that? Or do we sort of use our judgment as city staff and council offices to, to handle these things on a case-by-case basis, on what's appropriate for the community that's in the area? That's my preference. I mean, just, just like we, we talked about before with the Penitentiary Creek area, we cleared it. We didn't, we didn't come to council for approval to clear it. We also are trying now to figure out how to prevent it from reencamping. We're, we're not coming to council to have that discussion. We kind of work, and I'm sure you're working with many different parts of the city on things like that. So I'm not sure that, even though we're all frustrated and want to codify things like this, that doing so is the right approach.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's a good point you make, Councilmember, and you'll note in the, in the discussion earlier, in that memo, it makes reference to the development of a framework for shared public spaces, which is, which is about a citywide approach to the whole kit and caboodle, where people can't be, where they can be, a shared set of guidelines for using public buildings and public property. To your point, like, doing this one-off here and there creates, it creates the type of uncertainty that generates this conversation, right? And I understand the frustrations that many in the community have, that unhoused residents have, not knowing where they can, can go and be while they're looking for these other housing. So I think your, I think your instinct to have that larger policy conversation is the right one, and I hope that that's one that is generated by the upcoming process that, you know, you're, you're going into.
And I just want to, you know, for the, point out for the Saroni site, we, it's not necessarily the same kind of location, but we might say that the Penitentiary Creek site, which is seven or eight miles from Saroni, but is the, going to be the close, they're going to be the closest EIH to where Penitentiary Creek is, that would be the site area that we say, we're going to offer people service and then say, you can't stay here. So it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all policy across the city. And I'm just nervous about the way, the direction it's go, the direction it's going, because we, we need to sort of say, once we open this site, it's going to service these particular areas first, and we're offering it this to people and trying to use that to clear sensitive areas. And I know there might be sensitive areas related to Cherry as well, and, but they might, sometimes it might be right next to it, sometimes it might be somewhat further away. So I just wanted to kind of make, make that point. Did you want to make?
Could I make a comment? Thank you. I, I just want to, first, I want to emphasize what Omar was saying, which is, the larger policy conversation probably is important as we're doing this. We're starting to stand up these EIHs, we should probably be a bit more consistent, although I understand your site-specific interest, right? Case by case, let's figure out, okay, something's gone sideways here, we need to react to that or do something about it. But I also want to just put on your plate to remember, we still haven't resolved the RV issue, right? What is that policy going to be? That discussion, when we started having it, was it last week or two weeks ago, whatever it was? You know, it started showing, hey, this is going to concentrate RVs in parts of the city. The more we do these preserve our progress areas, to your point earlier, Councilmember Cohen, we're going to concentrate people into certain areas. We have to get into the waterways. That's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of unhoused people. Are we going to preserve our progress there? And if so, where will those people go from the creeks? Same thing, so RVs, waterways, all this stuff is still policy discussions that we have not sorted out, that are in front of us. And we're going to layer preserve our progress kind of stuff on everything we do. I, I don't see how that is financially manageable over the long term, and I'm not sure it's a great strategy in terms of concentrating unhoused people into just specific areas of the city.
And, and when we have these conversations, as we're seeing tonight and as we saw last week with the RV discussion, we, I don't think we ever come to a conclusion, because it is way too complicated to come to a conclusion. So I'm not, to this point at which we have to maybe change how we're doing this. But anyway, I want to ask one last question, and then I'll make a motion. Last question, unrelated to that part of it, back to the timeline for these sites. Can we, you know, I know where, there's a process for design and layout and infrastructure and utilities and all that, but can we at some point make a decision about what types of units we're going to buy? Place an order and have that part happening in parallel, so that when we're ready, we're, we, the, the, there's a shipment ready to bring to us to install, rather than have a delay later with the units being built?
So what I'm going to say to that, so I, we've had that conversation, we're continuing to iterate on that conversation. That's one where I really want Matt Lesh, who really just, as a team, they, they just, it's bad timing because of what just happened over the last few days. They will be ready to have that conversation and, and provide that kind of insight. There are some real practical challenges. As you know from before, we've got three sites that are paid for partially by philanthropic donations, and so they have some say over what, what, you know, manufacturers they use or don't use, that kind of thing. But I hear the larger point you're getting at, which is if we know we're going to do five of these, and we know they're all going to have, like, roughly this kind of unit, then, then maybe we can make a, a choice. I will tell you, though, bear in mind, one of the things we've seen happen just in the last couple of months is we went from, you know, the, the type that you see at, you know, Ruff Ferrari currently, for example, is different than really even what we're going to be doing with Villa del Oro, which is a site that's only going to be there for five years. And so then it's like, well, do we bulk order two sets? And what happens if we don't? So there's a lot of questions, and I think, it's no reason not to get there, but I would just say, let's get the, the folks responsible for construction in the room, and we'll have that.
Fair enough. But making those decisions sooner rather than later is, I guess, my point. I'm going to make a motion to adopt, to accept the staff recommendation on this item.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good conversation, colleagues. Okay, we will now go to item 8.2, and this is a, a public hearing on the 2024 Weed Abatement Commencement Report and Removal of Weeds or Refuse.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Rita Tabaldo, Code Enforcement Division Manager. Along with me is Mole Cumery. He's the Program Manager for the Weed Abatement Program for the County of Santa Clara. We do not have a presentation this evening, but we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tony, are there any speakers for commenting?
I have no cards for this item.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Thank you for sitting around for so long.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, and that leads us to open forum, and that is a public comment on city business, not on today's agenda. And my understanding, Tony, that we have many, many cards, and so we will go to a minute for a public comment, so that we get to hear everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call names. When, first person to the microphone gets to go first. Hold on. I dropped the first card. So I'm going to call several names. So first person to the microphone, you can go ahead and start speaking. If your name was called, please come down, sit in the front row. We are losing interpreters at 7 o'clock, so I would, I want to try to move through people as fast as possible so that people using interpretation can hear everything. So I'm going to start with Jose Murillo, Stephanie Jane, Wade, Charlotte Casey, and Stan Simon.
Good evening. I'm Jose Murillo, Director of Place Space Initiative at Amigos de Guadalupe. My colleagues definitely will share more about or ask for the city in regards to the recently, recently arrived migrant families, but I want to take this time to talk about my experiences that I've seen, actually in the last, over the last council meeting. So when I was getting home after the last council meeting, I got a call from my coworkers, talking about the fact that there's a family that was waiting outside our office door. It was a mom and dad, there were four kids. Mom was holding to the little, little one because she was coughing a lot, and the dad was holding on to a big plastic bag that held all of their life belongings. And so I brought them inside, because it was really cold, and I talked to them, and they're telling a story about them coming from Texas to San Jose, and the fact that they arrived Christmas Eve and they were just ready to go on the streets of San Jose. The mom was just resigned, she didn't think it was possible. But unfortunately, we were able to get them into the, into our.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Jane, also part of the leadership team at Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. Jose and I were here two weeks ago to talk to you about this same issue on behalf of our Executive Director, Maritza Maldonado, and we're back again, as promised, to give you a quick update. First, thank you for the $150,000 that you passed two weeks ago. Families were able to stay housed, which we're all grateful for, especially given the storms of the last week and the many families and children who would have been unsheltered in those storms. Our current understanding is that, is that the county is asking for a 200K match from the city to keep these families housed and safe for the next two months, during which time the county and its partners will be developing and implementing a longer-term solution. They're discussing these plans today, right now, at the Board of Supervisors meetings. As a welcoming city, we hope that the city will be a partner in these long-term solutions to serve our immigrant, immigrant community, and we hope that you will help match the county's 200K contribution in the short term, while we all work together to develop a.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Casey. I'm with the San Jose Peace and Justice Center, and I'm asking tonight that you have a policy of not allowing city officials or city representatives to travel to Hong Kong, to, I'm sorry, to Israel, based on its 75-year history of defying international law. A precedent was set when, a few years ago, when La Cardo was supposed to go to Qatar, and it turned out that the human rights record there was not good, so that trip was called off. Israel's ongoing occupation of the Palestinian territory is illegal under international law. Israel is certainly violating international law, humanitarian laws. And after the International Court of Justice in The Hague ruled several weeks ago that Israel must cease carrying out actions that could constitute genocide, it continued to bombard people, including.
Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Joan Simon, Nicholas, it looks like Soba, Ted Strow, and Donna.
I'm Stan Simon. I'm a Jewish citizen of San Jose, and I know about two years ago, you did not let the then-mayor go to Qatar because of the horrible human rights record of Qatar. I'm requesting you add Israel to that list. Israel, in the last three months, three months, have killed, murdered 30,751 people. Innocent people. They've killed 7,160 innocent women, and they've murdered, murdered 13,022 children. Children, okay?
Thank you. Next speaker.
You'll, you'll notice that the timer is also up on the screen.
Yeah, there is a timer on the dais and on the screen.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joan Simon. I am a Jewish citizen of San Jose and represent the San Jose Peace and Justice Center. According to the respected Euromed Human Rights Monitor, 48 hours after the International Court of Justice ordered Israel to take action to stop the crime of genocide against the Palestinian people in the Gaza Strip, the Israeli army has maintained its rate of killing civilians. Israel has also ramped up its efforts to starve, as well as forcibly displace the Palestinians from their home in Gaza. The Israeli army has killed over 373 Palestinians, including 345 civilians, and injured over 643 more since the court's ruling. They are continuing to bomb hospitals and destroy.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Wade. I'm a resident of District 10.
Yeah. You can lift up the mic.
Oh, okay, thanks. Mere weeks ago, the International Court of Justice ruled that Israel must take urgent action to prevent genocidal acts against Palestinians. In that time, Israeli forces have continued their military offensive in Gaza, killing another nearly 1,000 Palestinian civilians. Israel's continued human rights abuses and violations of international law are clear. As a resident of San Jose, I ask that you remain steadfast in your commitment to human rights and ban authorized city travel to Israel. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello. My name is Nicholas Aba. I'm a Palestinian resident. I appreciate the letter that you guys wrote demanding a cessation of hostilities, but it is not enough. I, I realize in the letter you wrote that this is a foreign issue, but it is not a foreign issue. 12 million of our tax dollars are going to fund Israel, as they are bombing now over 27,000 dead in Palestine. Ortiz, you talked about not wanting to rob our citizens.
Speak to the entire council.
Sure.
Thank you.
You talked about not wanting to rob citizens of their money to, and instead allocate it better to San Jose problems, and you can do so by defunding Israel and instead funding homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Laura, Yur, Andy, and Omar.
Hello, my name is Donna. I live in San Jose. I'm here as a concerned constituent. Councilmembers, in 2022, you blocked the mayor's trip to Qatar due to its human rights violations. Over the last century, Israel has committed countless human rights violations and war crimes against the Palestinian people, including killing over 25,000 innocent civilians and bombing hospitals. As long as these human right abuses are can you, continue, I strongly urge that you take action, applying the same principle on mayors and official council members for travel to Israel. As our elected representatives, you publicly represent San Jose's shared values. It is your responsibility and uphold our culture of diversity and respect for human rights. Please stand firm in your record of opposing travel to Israel. Israel must take action to prevent genocidal acts against Palestinians. Their lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi. I'm a San Jose native, and I am a constituent in District 3. And today, I want the city council to remain consistent in their moral values. In 2022, the city council blocked then-Mayor Sam- In 2022, the city council blocked then-Mayor Sam Locardo from going to Qatar based on Amnesty International's report about the country's human rights abuses. Currently, the Amnesty International report about Israel states that they have continued to issue oppressive and discriminatory system of governing towards Palestinians in Gaza and impose arbitrary restrictions on freedom of movement and assembly, which is why I'm calling on all of you to remain consistent and also not allow authorized city travel or city titles in the name of San Jose residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, I'm here today because day after day I receive news of another human being, including children, killed by the hands of the genocidal Israeli government. Day after day, the number of Palestinian civilians experiencing war crimes climbs. But day after day, bodies of government across the world, and even here in the Bay Area, speak up and take action.
This has to be related to city business, city business.
Like passing ceasefire resolutions and other efforts, today I ask you all to consider the effort to ban authorized city travel to Israel. We need you to be consistent in your respect for human rights to avoid lending legitimacy to the abuse against Palestinians. Please stand firm in, in your record of opposing travel to countries with human rights violations, as you did with Qatar. Israeli violations include the targeting destructions of civilian infrastructure, the intentional deprivation of food, water, and healthcare from civilians, and indefinite definite intention of Palestinians without travel.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Thank you for the letter you've written in support for peace. This step demonstrates a capacity for engagement with international politics that the people rightly expect of their representatives. We cannot be silent in the face of genocide, and this goes tenfold for those who occupy the halls of power such as yourselves. But we cannot stop there. In the past, the city has banned travel to countries such as Qatar for human rights violations, and action in this, right now, would condone the actions of Israel. Simply put, the majority of the world recognizes Israel's actions as genocide. It is only right that you act as you have in the past and ban city authorized travel to Israel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Elizabeth, Danny Johnson, Aisha, and Rod Stauber. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Omar. Quick shout out to my fellow Omar's here. You guys killed it today. He left, I didn't get to say hello, but you can let him know for me. I'm a San Jose resident, and I'm also Palestinian from Gaza. Just want to echo the point that San Jose has a precedent of banning travel to countries that commit human rights violations, as was done with Qatar. And over the past four months, Israel has committed countless human rights violations and war crimes against the Palestinian people, including the killing of 27,000 people, more than 80 of whom are my own relatives. They're also, they've also been targeting hospital, my mom's cousin, a doctor in Gaza was killed in the third and fourth floors, the hospital he's working with was targeted. And I have family members who are diabetic and have received cancer treatment but have no access to prescription medicine, so their health is rapidly declining. As long as these human rights abuses continue, I demand that you continue with this elected body's precedent and take action by banning authorized city travel to Israel. Good to see you again, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, council, my name is Aisha, I'm a community member, and I'm here today to urge the city council to continue San Jose's legacy of upholding human rights by taking action to ban authorized city travel to Israel, as they did in 2022 with Qatar, due to its human rights violations. We cannot pick and choose which human lives are more valuable than others, and we must be consistent in upholding human rights for all. The ICJ and a US District Court both confirmed that it is plausible that Israel is committing genocide. We all know here that Israel's killed roughly 30,000 innocent human beings, almost half children, in a mere four months, an unprecedented, unprecedented rate of killing. Israel's bombed hospitals, schools, destroyed infrastructures, deliberately starved an entire population. The UN, Amnesty International, and Israeli human rights groups have called Israel an apartheid state. Our elected representatives represent us, and this is something that impacts the citizenry of San Jose. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth, and I live in District 3. As our elected officials, you publicly represent San Jose's shared values. It's your responsibility to uphold our culture of diversity and respect for human rights in all of your official travels and as representatives of our great city. Please stand firm in your record of opposing travel to countries with human rights violations, such as Qatar, and ban authorized city travel to Israel. Impersonating medical officials is against international law, as is bombing hospitals, and both of those things have been done by Israel. Hundreds of 2,000-pound, US-made bombs have been dropped on the densely populated Gaza Strip, which houses 2.3 million people. This rate of killing and violence is unprecedented. Actions speak louder than words. Show your solidarity with your constituents by passing a ban on authorized travel to Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, next speaker. I have several people that haven't come down, so I'm going to move on. If I call your name, come down, and also sit in the front row, because I take a peek at the front row to see if people are lined up. I have Rory, Jordan, Sharat, Mimi. And if you heard your name, go ahead, go to the microphone. Raj? Yes. Yes. So again, I just read Rory, Mimi, Sharat, and Jordan. Come on down.
Salaam alaikum, maybe peace be with you guys. Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. You have been here for a good time and addressing the issues of the city, it's a great, that's a very great thing, and good thing to do, and it's important, but there is another issue, is grabbing our attention, our life, emotions, and heart and mind, and that is the Palestinian, or what's happening in Palestine and occupied territories. Folks, the International Court of Justice ruled that Israel must take urgent action to prevent genocidal acts against Palestinians. I wanted to ask you, what do you understand? I wanted to ask you, what do you understand from this ruling? And to take it in consideration in the future action and call at least for a ceasefire?
Thank you, next speaker.
Yes, my name is Dr. Sharat Lynn, I'm a Middle East expert and a political economist. So I, I'm here to, to support the call for, to ban travel to, to Israel because of what it's doing. You know, when, when we look back at what happened before the Second World War, we say, how could we have stopped the, the Holocaust? I'm, I'm talking about before 1941. And we should have done everything in our power to stop that. And that's why we must not be spending money in apartheid Israel. I'm holding in my hand a copy of the Fourth Geneva Convention, and this is the convention that, that governs the treatment of civilians in time of war. These colored tabs, I've marked each provision of the Fourth Geneva Convention that Israel has violated.
Thank you, next speaker. I'm also going to call down Wendy, Jethro Moore, and Nancy.
Hi, my name is Mimi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I voted for City Council Member Torres in the election, and right now I live in District 4, for Council Member Cohen. You blocked Mayor Locardo's trip to Qatar based on an Amnesty International report about that country's human rights abuses. Here's what Amnesty International said about Israel's human rights record before the invasion of Gaza. Israel imposed arbitrary restrictions on freedom of movement and assembly that amounted to collective punishment. I have a parent that lived through the bombings in London during World War II, and, and the UK was sieged for food, and this parent caught TB because they could no longer pasteurize milk. So I'm pleading you to uphold principles of human rights for travel for your mayor and city council members. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Wendy Greenfield, I'm a longtime resident of San Jose and a retired teacher from San Jose Unified School District. I mention this because my heart is breaking for the 11,500 children or more of Gaza who have died as a result of Israeli bombing and siege. That's 40% of the total fatalities of 27,500 plus, according to the Gaza Health Ministry. My heart breaks for the many orphans and unhoused children, and for those in needs of medical care, for the 1,000 children who have had limbs amputated without anesthesia.
Please, please refer to city business.
Yes, I, I will get to the connection, certainly. As a Jewish woman, I say not in my name. The Israeli government is trampling on Jewish tradition that values human life. As a US citizen, I say not in my name. Stop...
Thank you, next speaker.
Yes. Finish, finish, finish your thought.
Okay. My, my thought is that I ask all of you to just say not in our name in San Jose, and to please not allow San Jose elected officials to go to Israel as, as representatives of our city during this genocide.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Nancy. Thank you, city council members, for issuing a statement on January 16 to support a ceasefire in Gaza. Ten days later, International Court of Justice issued a ruling finding that Israel's acts could amount to genocide and issued six provisional measures, ordering Israel to halt and prevent genocidal actions and to report back to the court in one month. However, since the January 26 ICJ ruling, Israel has intensified its military operations in Gaza. So more has to be done by the communities. We ask the city council to pass a ban on authorized travel to Israel. Official traveling now to Israel shows that...
Thank, thank you, next speaker. Also, Samina, King Suri, Nikki, and Keely.
Hi, I'm not Reverend Jethro Moore. However, he had to leave after waiting here for a couple of hours, and he asked me to say the following.
Just, just a moment. Tony?
I, I did give her the okay, I didn't realize it was somebody who had already spoken, but she is reading a statement from Jethro Moore, who I did call.
And, and we allow people to speak on behalf of someone else?
We have in the past, it doesn't happen very often, but we have done that.
Okay.
If they're reading a statement.
Oops, just disappeared. Okay. He would like to express his support for a ban on elected officials authorized travel to Israel, as long as the bombing strikes and siege of Gaza is causing so much loss of life and suffering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and everyone here. A reminder that I do have the nuclear code, Russia and North Korea love me. It has been 641 days since I've seen my son. My mental state changes throughout the day, from extreme pain and uncontrollable crying to being resilient and accepting that this situation was given to me to help me grow. It's been 122 days since Hamas took hostages, negotiations continue. We know Santa Clara Board of Supervisors is not going to help me get my son back or support a ceasefire. Susan Ellenberg, Board President and District 4 Representative, is from Israel. Please use your collective voice to demand a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, hello, my name is Elias Welsh, I'm a resident. So basically, you'd have to be an F student of history to not know exactly what's going on. People are giving all kinds of rationales back and forth about who's justified, who's not, but they have the most cutting-edge technology in the world, in Israel, and other people are saying they came in on hangladders or what have you, right? They have face recognition technology, and they know what they're, this is not a surprise. This was not a, I'll, I'll leave it up to you to do that. 61% of the structures in Gaza have been destroyed, 61% of the structures.
Please tie it to city business.
If, if you, okay, so I don't know if that's not the definition of the genocide right there. Again, 61% of the structures in the entire Gaza Strip. So, as other people have said...
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Sean Bennet, Nate Dean, and Alisa.
We, we are taking public comment on city business. Please tie your comment to city business. Thank you.
You're, you're not technically supposed to speak on items that have already occurred on the agenda, but if you want to talk about homelessness, if you want to talk about homelessness in general, you can do that, but you can't talk about 8.1 specifically. You can talk about homelessness in general, just not 8.1 specifically. I know, but you, you turned in the card after we'd already closed public comment.
These are, these are public comment on city business, not on the agenda.
Yeah, so you could talk about homelessness...
If it was on the agenda already, it's done.
I just wanted to know if I had more time to do that or not.
No.
It's, it's really important, because actually, this is a situation that's, you know, I'm trying to save my own life right here, and by coming here and speaking right now, my life is definitely in danger by the time I walk out the store. It's a very serious situation, whether it's physically and mental, also endangering personally to myself, but these abatements that are happening right now, the one that I'm going through right now, that I shouldn't even be going through, which the first time I came up here was actually asking for my life back for being forced homeless in the first place, because I'm a person who have a master degree in San Jose State, I was brought here out of state for very valid reasons, but I need some help in getting this stopped at this moment. I worked my butt off this morning, all day today, to try to get stuff thrown onto my vehicles, only to be knowing that there's nowhere else for me to be able to park by tomorrow morning, because they had to, you know, quit for the day, of course, while I'm still doing this, give me some time. Adam was a very nice gentleman, but every officer and every other person I interacted with was feeding me with lies, telling me that my stuff's all going to be taken, put stuff on your back, and just start walking away from everything again, when last year I was assaulted and kidnapped for three days by this 5150, and apologized to me and let go for no reason.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Nikki, and I speak today as the grandchild of a Holocaust survivor whose family's Jewish heritage is deeply important to them. The city council, council should ban city authorized travel to Israel, as mentioned by many others. This precedent was set in 2022 with Qatar. Both the ICJ and our own federal court system have acknowledged probable genocide committed by Israel against the Palestinian people. While they use the word probable, the world can see definitively this is genocide. More than 30,000 Palestinians have been indiscriminately slaughtered, including more than 13,000 children. This very meeting, we acknowledged Heart Month, so I ask you, have heart, have humanity, act for justice, and do the right thing. We should not ever be traveling to or supporting an apartheid settler colonial regime that is committing genocide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my council members, my name is Keely, and I'm a resident of San Jose. I am here to demand that you ban city authorized travel to, quote, "Israel," the genocidal apartheid state. Israel's repeated human rights violations, as has the ICJ, and more recently, a U.S. judge who also ruled that Biden, the Biden administration must take every effort to stop supporting this genocide. So I'm urging you to be consistent. I'm urging you to pass a ban on authorized city travel to Israel, given the plausibility of genocide, and it's his...
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call down Christopher, Mark, and I have an anonymous. All cards have now been called. If you did not hear your name and you submitted a card, please come down and take a seat in the front row. Go ahead.
Hello, I live here in District Six, and I'm asking you to ban city travel to Israel considering the extraordinary loss of human life at the hands of the Israeli army. The Israeli Defense Minister called Palestinians "human animals." The Israeli president said, "There are no innocent civilians in Gaza." The Israeli Defense spokesperson said, "We are dropping hundreds of tons of bombs on Gaza. The focus is on destruction, not accuracy." It's hard for me to hear these statements about other human beings. It's even harder for me to know that my beautiful city of San Jose is conducting business as usual with a government that makes these statements. Please, with enough American and international pressure, we can save lives. Please support a ban on travel to Israel.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
I would like to speak on authorized travel to Israel. I believe it is wildly hypocritical that former Mayor Sam LaCardo was banned from traveling to Qatar in 2022 over concern of human rights violations, but was permitted to travel to Israel in 2019 to learn about critical policy issues affecting both Israel and the United States. Israel was founded on human rights violations 75 years ago, when Palestinians were driven out of their homes and their land. Since then, Israel has been conducting genocide of Palestinians. The IDF has tanks, bombs, and guns, while Palestine doesn't even have a military. Israel is currently bombing children's hospitals. There is no justification of that. For these reasons, I urge the ban of city officials authorized travel to Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Chris, and I'm from the Muskogee Creek Nation. I'm also a resident at the Arena Hotel, one of your emergency interim sites. We've had some issues over there since day one. We've had promises of visits that are supposed to be given to us. You guys have clearly laid out the guidelines for the visits, and we've yet to have visits. Even people in jail get visits. The food there has been kind of, it's been kind of bad. We had diarrhea, a case of diarrhea that ran through the house over the Christmas season. We've tried to work with our director, but it seems to be that he has these excuses of, at first he wanted to have the entire facility be filled. Now it's, he wants to have the new 24-hour staff to get acclimated before we get visits. I'm asking that we get visits. Can we get visits, please? That's all I'm saying. Like, I had to come down here to ask you guys, we shouldn't have to do that. Can we get our visits? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, so I'm speaking as a descendant of the Vietnam War, and it really pains me to see the war crimes being committed against Palestine. San Jose City Council must take a consistent stand against human rights violation by banning authorized travel to Israel. Simone Zerman, the director of the film "Israelism," came onto Democracy Now! to say that she felt deeply connected to the place. She thought she knew Israel, but the way that the apartheid system is built, as such as an Israeli Jew, does not have to see the reality that Palestinians live under. They do not have to see what's on the other side, the daily horrors and brutality and deep denial of dignity and freedom that Palestinians live under. We now see in real time the monstrosities that are happening in Palestine as their people, land, and history are being cleansed. NPR has reported that there's a death toll of at least 25,000 Palestinians, and the men, women, and children deserve to live instead of living under the rebels of the hands of the $14 billion that is funding the weaponry to the Israeli government instead of aid to the Palestinians. The people of Gaza are being intentionally deprived of food, water, and healthcare.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, seeing nobody coming forward. Oh, there you go. Go ahead. I have had several cards of people that have come up.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mark. First, I want to echo what somebody said earlier. Thank you all for declaring an emergency and putting the lives of the people by the river first, probably saved lives. Second, what do I do if a council member's office and staff doesn't return calls or emails to get something done? Is there a, is there some, mayor? Okay. And one minute. You guys have talked about finding money to do some of these projects, and I'm disturbed by the fact that the city has spent $9 million hiring security guards here, and for 246 years, the city has seemed to make it without the need for that. And I've been twice denied access to City Hall because I'm disabled. And I wonder if there's any reason why the people in this city...
Thank you. No, it's a one-minute timer. We have two separate timers. One's on the microphone, and that's a full, exactly a minute. We do the one on the screen as a courtesy, so people can see it. Next speaker. If you want to, I'll talk to you after the meeting. Okay, seeing no speakers coming forwards, back to the council.
Thank you. We are adjourned.